Donegal and by train. And then we took a bus, I think, down and then took the train back.
All right, we're going to get started. Good evening. It is seven o'clock on Wednesday, October 22nd, and I am calling the meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValle, and I'm the Chair of the Board. Tonight, we'll be following the posted agenda. Do we have anyone on Zoom tonight? Evan? Okay, so tonight, we will be in person without a Zoom, and the meeting is being televised live and recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia, and will be available on their website and on YouTube. So first item on the agenda is public input. Public input should be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues within the jurisdiction of this board that are not current subject of a pending public hearing before the board. Public comment on any public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings. And I did want to note Anita did text me, and she's running a few minutes late. So is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? And there is Anita. Seeing there none, we will move on to the next items on the agenda. Given that it is a pretty packed agenda tonight, I am going to ask that the public hearings tonight be limited to a maximum of 45 minutes, and try and keep the two administrative reviews to 15 minutes or less, because we do have other board business at the end of everything to deal with. So first administrative review is Old Westward Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Attorney Jim Dangora for the applicant George Allen and Son Incorporated. What we have before you is an application for an A&R endorsement. We have just about 3.98 acres. It's sometimes commonly referred to as a triangular lot, so we have significant frontage on accepted public ways. So it's entitled to an A&R endorsement. Just by way of history, quickly, you may have maybe recall back in June, we were here for an A&R endorsement on this property. We've reconfigured the lot lines, and we went for a variance before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Because Lot B doesn't comply with the 80% upland requirement, we were granted that relief. So here we have this plan. We're back before you for this amended endorsement, so we can move forward with the next phase of the project. So very simply, plenty of frontage doesn't constitute a subdivision. We respectfully ask for your endorsement.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I did have one question. Did CommCon Conservation Commission approve this plan?
They approved. They didn't approve it with this lot line, but what they did approve were very tight building envelopes for the two houses, which will appear on either side, almost mirror each other on that lot line. So it was a very tight building envelope in there, so.
And just out of curiosity, are you guys going back to them?
I don't believe we need to. We're all set. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other hurdles that you guys have to go through potentially coming back to us for another one?
I certainly hope not. We're in discussions with Board of Health at the moment regarding some of their requirements, but yeah, we hope not to be before you folks again for this particular lot. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I will move that we grant the A&R with no determination as to zoning.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You, too.
Well, that's an auspicious start.
Next on the agenda, 15 Research Place.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Melissia. I'm an engineer with Haley Ward Associates. Here with me tonight is Steve Padre from Clutech, who is the tenant of the building at 15 Research Place, and Chris Clark, who's the contractor at Peacock Construction. What we're here tonight is asking for a minor modification to the minor site plan approval that was granted just about a year or so ago. And it has to do with the parking lot. As you can see on the screen, in the green area, we want to reconfigure the parking island, in which to better facilitate a sweat path for the trucks leaving the loading dock. The loading dock is in, the retaining wall is in, most of the utilities are in. And before they button things up, we would like to just reconfigure the island. What happens is an additional nine spaces will be impacted. However, we still are well overparked for the use. Light poles will be shifted accordingly, and some of the trees that get supplanted on the original island that was going to be reconfigured will be put back onto the island. We're still well within landscaping standards. I think all told, we lose about 50 square feet of interior island space.
Okay. Any questions? Marcy, Deirdre, Anita, John?
Well, I mean, I guess since this plan came before, we've kind of implemented different landscaping guidelines and more green standards. I'm just wondering if there's any, I mean, we're, you know, trying to look for more green and more trees. I'm just wondering if there'd be any opportunity as part of this plan to adopt any of that.
I mean, from the zoning regulations, we require about 8,600 square feet of planted area. And as it stands now, we have 34,400 square feet of planted area. So we are kind of well over green. I don't want to, that's not quite the word I was looking for.
If that's a thing.
Again, we're not touching any of the perimeter at all. It's really just a reconfiguration of this one interior island.
Okay.
Any other questions on this side? Joel, me?
Yep.
Need a motion?
Not yet. I've got one request, actually. I've noticed in the narrative, in a couple different places, you have some discussion about how many parking spaces are being removed. I think in the third paragraph, you mentioned it's a reduction of seven, and you list a total of 110, or 112, I think, is listed. So
My dyslexia kicked in again. I can recheck that.
I would appreciate just updating the narrative to reflect.
I'll do that.
So if you could do that at some point and resubmit it to Evan.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you. Just so that the total is accurately reflected in the narrative. Otherwise, we'll get confused if this does come back for another change. All right, so I will take a motion.
I move we grant the request for a minor mod at 15 Research Place.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Deirdre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
You very much. Have a good night.
You, too. All right, next on the agenda is 10 Independence Drive.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Blansky, Adam Costa with the firm of Mead, Talerman and Costa, on behalf of Ronnet Hospitality LLC, the applicant for this CEI OD special permit. I know that board members are generally familiar with the site known as 10 and 12 Independence Drive, known to many of you as the former Radisson Hotel. I also understand that this project was before you even more recently than I was before you. I was before the board back in the latter part of 2024, when we were seeking an approval for what is now the adult daycare portion of the site. The project or the site came back before you a few months ago, following submission of an application in July to determine qualification under the provisions of your CEI OD bylaw. My understanding, although I was not involved at the time, but my client tells me that the board confirmed that the project did qualify under the CEI OD standards. But we do need require a special permit pursuant to the provisions of that bylaw, and so we are before you tonight requesting that special permit. To give you a bit of additional detail, first off, I should introduce Ashok Patel, the principal of Ronnet Hospitality, is here with me tonight. Hushy Afshar with Taj Engineering is also here as well. He prepared, of course, the site plan that was submitted with the application materials, and to the extent that the board members have specific questions about those plans, I'll likely defer to him. But you can see that the proposal that's before you is in two parts. The first is to utilize the remaining portion of the first story of this middle building, I'll call it, for a restaurant, specifically a pizza restaurant, a relatively small restaurant. You can see in the floor plans that were submitted that the floor area of the restaurant is only 1,727 square feet in total. And then secondly, second component of the application is to convert what was historically hotel rooms on the second story of this building to 15 apartments. And the breakdown specifically with respect to the apartments will be, and you can see this also, it's on a sheet, it's on a couple of different sheets, but it's most noticeable on Sheet A-101 of the plan set. You can see that there's a proposal for two, what are referred to as one-bedroom or studio apartments. They're really studios because of the way that they're designed as the floor plan shows. There's no real separation of the bedroom from the living area. So there's two proposed studios. There are 12 proposed two-bedroom units, and there is one proposed three-bedroom unit. And again, we provided full floor plan, so you can get a sense as to how we are reconfiguring and restructuring the second story of the building. We recognize that consistent with the town's inclusionary zoning bylaw, that we're required to provide an affordability component, which we will comply with. We understand that. But that's the proposal in a nutshell. I did have an opportunity prior to tonight's meeting in reviewing the agenda and the various links that you can see on the screen, to see that there were comments submitted. There was a comment submitted by DPW, another by FIRE, and sort of a no comment by the police department. Again, I'll defer to Hushy Afshar to address the specifics, to the extent the board wishes to, of the DPW letter, which had a number of components to it. But suffice it to say, in a nutshell, that we have no objection to those requirements. There were, I think, four specific items that really related to adjustments to the plan. We could make those adjustments. Ideally, if the board is in a position and believes that it is prepared to approve the proposal, those could be conditions of approval, but we have no objection to the substance of those four suggestions. There was also reference throughout the DPW letter to compliance with various codes, state codes, which, of course, we will comply with, we have to comply with, even if we didn't want to comply with, we're obligated to. And the same really goes for the Fire Department's letter. The Fire Department cited two various NFPA standards that we're obligated to comply with, ranging from sprinklers to other various topics that are encompassed in that code. And we recognize that we will need to retrofit the building accordingly and meet the requirements of state code. What I will say with respect to the CEI OD is you have various standards within a fairly comprehensive bylaw concerning qualification for CEI OD, which has previously been determined, but also with respect to the issuance of special permits for projects within the CEI OD. What I'll also note, and I suspect you know this, and this probably isn't the first project to come before you, that is a proposed adaptive reuse of an existing building. And so many of these provisions, landscaping provisions, parking standards, signage requirements, and then even some of the specific performance standards that deal with, for example, improved access, or excellence in place making, or comprehensive signage, or pedestrian scale, we're not proposing to raise, or reconstruct, or change the footprint really in any way of the existing building. We have made some improvements, many of which were before you in the context of the adult daycare proposal about eight or nine months ago. We have made various improvements to the site. In that connection, you can see those on the site plan. My understanding in talking with Mr. Afshar is that there has also been some feedback received from staff over the course of the past few months, since the last appearance before you, and there is an updated version. I think, yes, the version that, yes, the version that is on the screen currently is slightly different than the version that was in the original application package that you received back in July. It's just this one page, the main site plan, but we added, for example, snow storage areas that were not defined previously on the site. We added an additional dumpster. We also provided dumpster enclosures, which had not been proposed in the original plans that were submitted with the application. And so we made various other adjustments that are called out throughout the site in response to feedback received from staff. But in terms of the overall layout of the site, the layout is the same as what was before you about nine or 10 months ago, when the adult daycare was proposed. We have better defined the parking spaces. You might recall that that was a discussion that was had when we were last before you. Number of parking spaces, layout of parking spaces, as well as the general circulation throughout the site. We have designated, for ease of reference, spaces that we would call out as pertinent to or associated with the adult daycare, as opposed to spaces that would be associated with the hotel uses, as opposed to spaces that would be associated with the pizza restaurant. And we tried to locate those appropriately. We, of course, recognize that the reality is when individuals use the site, they may park wherever they find an open parking spot. I will say we feel quite comfortable with the parking layout, and certainly with the number of spaces. I don't think it can even be argued that there's insufficient parking on the site. There arguably is maybe too much parking on the site. But there's a significant number of parking spaces. We are making improvements in the sense that we are repaving the parking spaces and adding some green space and some landscaping and shrubbery and whatnot. And we've improved the circulation, which was really in large part due to feedback we had received and guidance we had received from the board when we were before you in late 2024, to provide for these various uses on the same site. We think that they're compatible uses, and my client, Mr. Patel, can certainly speak to this more eloquently than I can, but we think that the uses are compatible inasmuch as, you know, these hotel uses, generally speaking, those who utilize hotels are not staying in their hotel rooms during the day, and so we expect that they'll be gone during many of the hours when the adult daycare is in use. And then conversely, the adult daycare is generally an eight or nine to four o'clock proposition, not extending into the evening hours. And the restaurant, as small as it may be, is, you know, going to be, yes, open during daytime hours, but really, the rush that tends to occur in restaurants is more toward the dinner time hour. And at that point in time, the daycare, the adult daycare will no longer be operating. Certainly, people will be coming back to the hotel, but that's sort of intentional, because in order to keep a restaurant like this in operation, we want the users of the hotel to frequent it. So that's the proposal that's before you. Again, I'm happy to answer any general questions as I can, but if you have specific questions about either the site plan, or the floor plans, or questions about the operations in general, certainly, I would invite my client or Mr. Afshar to speak to those.
Okay. Thank you. We do have letters.
Yes, we do. This is from DPW. The engineering department has performed a review of the application for 10 Independence Drive submitted for applicant Ronnet Hospitality LLC. The following contents of the submission were reviewed for appropriateness of method and accuracy, as well as for compliance with Town of Chelmsford Stormwater Bylaw, Town of Chelmsford Stormwater Management Regulations, Division Three, Sewer Capacity and Connection Restriction. And they mentioned both the application packet and the traffic memo. Site layout review, outstanding DPW engineering issues not addressed. And there's four bullets, as Mr. Costa mentioned. All existing and/or proposed utilities should be clearly and accurately labeled, size, material, existing, proposed, rim, invert, et cetera, on the drawing, reflecting the most updated utility connections and sizing. Site layout should have registry block and planning board signature lines and file number. Include utilities and drainage easement on site layout. Proposed sewer connection and grease trap must be shown on plan with proposed elevations and inverts. Sewer comments, the applicant should analyze sewage flow using Title V and proposed conditions to determine required sewer allocation. This should be submitted to DPW for approval for existing sewer connections. If there is a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit necessary floor plans and seating plans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations. And then there are several bullets that are pretty typical for how they do that. And then there are also four recommended general conditions of approval that I won't read because they're pretty standard. And then also for the fire, the Fire Prevention Office has reviewed the SEAT application for 10 Independence Drive. The proposal includes a restaurant and 15 apartments. This office offers the following comments. Fire protection systems, evaluate existing water supply and hydrants to meet applicable NFPA standards. Sprinkler systems must comply with NFPA 13 for coverage design and installation, accounting for mixed occupancies. Install a code compliant NFPA 72 fire alarm system with full coverage, separate zones for residential and restaurant areas, and UL-listed central station monitoring. Mixed occupancy requirements, ensure proper fire separation between residential and restaurant areas per Massachusetts State Building Code and NFPA standards. Fire rated assemblies and penetrations must meet occupancy and egress requirements. Egress and emergency lighting, all egress paths, stairways, and exits must meet NFPA standards and Massachusetts State Building Codes. Provide emergency lighting and exit signage throughout. Wayfinding signage to be provided and coordinated with this office. Commercial cooking, restaurant must comply with applicable NFPA and UL standards. Hood suppression systems must tie into the fire alarm and be permitted before installation. Construction permits, permits are required for all fire protection work, including sprinkler modifications installation, fire alarm installation, and kitchen hood suppression systems. Plan review, submit final architectural, mechanical, and fire protection plans for review and approval before construction or occupancy as part of the building permitting process. Separate Knox Box Key to Chelmsford Fire Department Standards for the apartments, location to be coordinated with this office, and E911 application to be filed with the town's E911 Committee for addressing purposes of the restaurant and apartments. This must be completed before requesting final inspections. This office reserves the right, provide additional comments once detailed plans are received. We respectfully request this letter be made part of the public record in your decision-making process. Respectfully, Josh Abbott, Captain Garbovich.
And there are no concerns from the Chelmsford Police Department. Okay, thanks.
Should be a Board of Health letter there?
Is it in? Is it in? Thank you.
I think it's that one.
Dear Planning Board, this letter concerns the proposed project at 10 Independence Drive, which seeks to convert the easterly side of the building's second floor into 14 apartments and the first floor into a restaurant. This applicant is expected to submit sewer calculations, pay for any inflow infiltration increase, sign a memorandum of understanding, and connect to the town sewer system. If the project cannot connect to the town sewer system, it must comply with Town of Chelmsford Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article Seven, Groundwater Protection Zone Regulation. Upon Board of Health approval, an onsite septic system will be required, meeting Title V Regulations 310 CMR 15, and following the Health Department's application and inspection process. The proposed kitchen facility must comply with the State Sanitary Code 105 CMR 590, minimum sanitation standards for food establishments and the Town of Chelmsford Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article Nine, Food Service and Retail Food Establishment provisions. The applicant must complete a food establishment plan review and submit fully stamped architectural plans for approval. Once these plans are approved, the applicant shall apply for a food establishment permit, and a final inspection by the Health Department must be completed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. If a dumpster will be located on site, it must comply with Town of Chelmsford Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article Five, Commercial Refuse Dumpster Collection Licensing and Operation. Thank you for your attention to these requirements. Respectfully, Donna Greenwood, Public Health Director.
Did we see a, in a butter's letter, two in there for Mr. Chungus?
Yeah, we, I do want to address that at some point as well. Evan, do you have any other?
Just some quick updates. On September 4th, there was a departmental meeting with the applicant. That was based upon the August 8th plan. There were several items of note. First one was the, some of the bedrooms included closets, and DPW wanted them counted as two beds. I believe the plan that is in front of us this evening reflects that change, as well as the revised parking ratios per SEOD. Second one was, there was some seating discrepancies with auto pizza. I also believe those have been clarified in the updated plan. There was discussion about install, installation of a bus stop, in case there are school-aged children at the apartments. This plan shows a bus stop. I assume that's been coordinated with the school department, as far as where they would like it located, either within the cul-de-sac or not. That meeting, there was some discussion about possibility of sidewalks down Alpine Lane. I'm not exactly sure to what extent any conversations have taken place. As you read, the DPW memo doesn't have any notes related to that. And final item, it was good to hear confirmation on the compliance with the inclusionary, and I assume that Attorney Costa will likely continue to be involved in that, which owes well for getting through that process. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions from the board? Marcy?
Yeah, so I'm looking at this new plan, and this addition of a bus stop shelter. Are you going to provide some type of safe walkway for these children to get to and from? Because looking at this, they're walking right through the parking lot. This is not safe for children. There's no walkway, there's no crosswalk. The lawn area is used for snow storage, so during the winter, that will be piled with snow. So to me, this is not safe for kids.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
So certainly, I'll invite Mr. Afshar to comment if he'd like to. It's his site plan, not mine. But my understanding, consistent with what you just heard from Mr. Blansky, was that there was a request that we include a school bus stop.
Okay.
Generally speaking.
The bus stop is there. I can see that. It's getting the children to and from the bus stops safely.
Right. And I think the thought is, it may not end up where it's shown on the plan, right? Because as the point was made, it's really up to the school department to determine where they'd prefer that bus stop to be, in consultation with the bus company.
Well, even if it's like, this isn't the location, if it's still somewhere, because you're asking these children to walk through a parking lot, unless you're putting this up where you also have the drop-off and pickup for the adult daycare, which I probably also don't agree with being safe, because you're going to have people dropping off at the same time the school buses are coming up to. When you're looking at putting together your bus stop location for these potential children, you're going to need to put in some type of safe passageway for them to get to it, not directly walk through where cars are going to be coming in and parking.
Sure. No, it's a fair point. And I think that the challenge that exists, of course, is the bus company may not want to enter into the site and traverse large portions of the parking lot, so as to pick up children closest, let's say, to the building. Conversely, if you move the children further away from the building to a location where the bus may be comfortable stopping, you're requiring them to access that location. And how do they access it? Well, by crossing multiple lanes of traffic in a parking lot. We had had some discussion before, when I was before you, nine or 10 months ago, relative to the adult daycare, about safe traversing of the parking lot. And as a consequence of that, we increased the size, for example, of this island. It's an awkwardly shaped island. And to your point about snow storage in the wintertime, it's not much of an island at all. But we increased the size of that island in order to facilitate not just traversing the site, but we also added, as you'll see, crosswalks to identify locations where individuals were. would be crossing and to alert motorists as to where that would be occurring. But I understand it's a bit different with children, right? So we're certainly happy to work cooperatively with the department to place it in a different location within the site, recognizing that there, there is that sort of push and pull between, it's great to get it close to the building, so the children don't have to walk through the parking lot, but that has to be agreeable to the school department and to the bus company coming further onto the site. Do we care if they come on, and to your point, they take the same pathway that would be taken by, for, for purposes of drop off and pickups for the adult daycare? I don't think we object to that. But yes, it could create potential conflicts if those pickups in the morning are occurring at the same time as the drop offs for the adult daycare. It may also be that the bus company doesn't want to come that deep into the site and then have to circumvent the, the rest of the traffic throughout the parking area. But we'll work cooperatively with the town.
Now, that's just something I'd like you guys to sort of keep in mind, is that we need to make sure that, you know, if we're renting these apartments, that they have children, that they're able to get out there through some type of safe means to get to their bus stop. That includes like a cross off or safe walking area where they're not walking directly through where cars are going to be coming in and out, because it is very close to where the drop off and pickup is for the adult daycare. And if you have kids both at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary, elementary schools, that bus is coming through at three different times in the morning, and then again, three different times in the afternoon. So that is definitely going to sort of mix in with when these other, you know, the adult daycare people are going to get dropped off and picked up. A lot of traffic and a lot of potentials for these children to get injured.
Fair point. Understood.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Before we move on, I'm noticing a couple statements that you made. I just want to set the, the right expectations and make sure we're aligned. Typically, this board does not like to approve plans and projects without a final version of the plans vetted by us. So I, I heard a couple things that you mentioned as potential special conditions in a decision. Typically, we have not approved plans without things like that bus stop being resolved before we approve it. So I just wanted to make sure that we're aligned on expectations.
So that's fair. I didn't want to be presumptive. I didn't know if the board envisioned this being approved in a single evening, because the feedback, I, I've seen feedback much more extensive in prior, with prior applications, and the feedback here seemed rather minimal. Police Department had no comment, Fire Department comments were really rooted in code, and the comments from the DPW really only highlighted those four additional adds to the plan. I hadn't seen the letter from the Board of Health, but I took some notes as to what it contains, and obviously I'll review a copy subsequent to tonight's meeting. I didn't hear anything that was problematic there. Most of those also seem to be rooted in State Sanitary Code or other provisions of state law. But I understand your point concerning final plans. I, I guess with respect to the bus shelter, all I would say is, I suppose we could have further consultation with the school department. I don't know whether they would make a final call on a project that has yet to be approved. I'm not sure what their practice is, but...
They're typically pretty open to providing feedback on plans like this.
Okay.
Your chair?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Anita?
Nothing.
John?
No questions at this time.
Joel?
No.
Mike?
Nothing here, looks pretty tame.
Okay. I did have a couple questions. I noticed that a lot of the snow storage is on landscaped areas, which usually destroys the landscaping. Since you guys have so much extra parking, would it be possible to move those, that snow storage to the furthest paved area? It helps keep the stormwater contained and also helps to keep the landscaping live.
Good evening, MSH, Chairman and Board Members, Hushman Afshar, Tungning, LLC. The, traditionally, the site is a large site, and at the westerly end of the property, if I may, we have an area farther up to the west, please. Yeah, there you go, on the other side of the, this area is over 15,000, 15,500 square foot, and this is reserved for snow storage. It's not being utilized for anything beyond these parking spaces. And in case there's a very heavy storm, and even this area gets filled up, we are proposing to haul away, which is not in the plan.
But you've also got snow, a lot of snow storage all over the, the rest of the parking lot.
It's a common practice that all the previous areas to be used as the snow storage. Now, which is all the sides and, and islands, we have added a few more islands, but we have plenty of room on the west side. This is a detention area, so there's no harm in really using this area as a snow storage. But if you don't want any, any snow on the other green spaces...
Part of the reason why I'm asking is because there isn't a wide area of landscaping in some of these spaces. So to destroy the landscaping in those areas with the snow storage could be problematic for neighbors.
If, if the planning board decide to do so, that's okay. We do have, again, that large area. However, as you know, it is common practice, on the edge, they provide no curb, so you can then push to the previous areas along the edges, as you can see. But again, the detention area definitely can be used.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I mean, one thing the board might consider would be to limit the extent of snow storage in some of those areas. You know, if there's these smaller storms with two or three inches, to suggest that we would have to plow all that snow, move it to the opposite side of the site in, in dump trucks or whatnot, is a challenge. If we have, you know, an 18-inch snowfall, then I think it would be appropriate to say we don't want the, the banks to be piled 20 feet high along the entirety of this, you know, five-foot perimeter around the, the parking, parking area. So we, we defer to the, the board's discretion and will, will accommodate.
I also, in, I think the previous plan showed a patio for the pizza restaurant, and this plan doesn't look like it has it, is that correct? It looked like it was green space, but I couldn't really tell.
So I do see that there was, I believe the plan, yes, the plan still shows the patio, the site plan does. It's not quite as visible on the floor plans, because it's almost off the page, because the floor plans are focused on the, the four corners of the building. But yes, the patio is still shown in that, in that area, sort of at the corner of the, the driveways there as they meet.
Okay, thanks. And then we have had a couple letters from neighbors complaining about slope issues.
Yes.
Could you address that?
I can. And so I can give an overview, and then because everything I'm telling you is going to be secondhand, I can let you hear from Mr. Afshar, who can report sort of the firsthand details, because he was personally involved. But, and certainly I think Mr. Blansky was involved as well and can, can probably fill in some of the gaps. As I understand it, there was a concern expressed by the owner or in-owner of the immediately adjacent property at 9 Fletcher Street. My understanding is that that property is a condominium association comprised of a number of units. The concern that was raised related to the slope between that property, which is at a higher elevation than the adjacent parking lot, our adjacent parking lot, and stormwater issues as it relates to that slope. This was not necessarily a surprise to us that this was raised as an issue, because we knew that there were some erosion and stormwater issues in this corner of the site. In fact, so much so that as we began to do some of the preparatory work for development of the already permitted components of this property, we found that the portion of the parking lot that you see on your screen, sort of the southeastern portion of that property, the parking lot, the right, bottom right-hand corner, was under a couple of inches of dirt and, and sand and silt that had run off down the slope and covered portions of the, the pavement. As I understand it, that's a consequence of, for many years, the stormwater that has accumulated on the 9, I think it's actually 5, 7, and 9 Fletcher Street property, the condominium property, has, has sheet flowed onto our property. In fact, more than sheet flowed, there's actually an outlet within the slope, taking stormwater from that adjacent property and, and placing it or dumping it onto our property, as I understand it. I'm not aware of any existing easement that allows that to happen, but it's a condition that has existed for, for some time, and frankly, long beyond, long before my client acquired the property. So it was brought to our attention that there was some concern about the, the slope and stormwater further degrading that slope, and more specifically, about the dangers associated with use of the 5, 7, 9 Fletcher Street property in close proximity by vehicles in particular, in close proximity to that drop off. And so in rather short order, Mr. Afshar prepared a plan. In fact, a copy of that plan is one of the linked documents that was included on your agenda. It was a plan that proposed a guardrail that would be placed on our property, but along the boundary, in very close proximity to the boundary, as well as extending the, I'll call it the flat area, I think it was proposed to be approximately a 2% grade, extending it a bit beyond the proposed location of that, of that guardrail, after which the property would then slope down, as it has to, to the property, to, to the parking lot that is a part of the subject property, and then that slope would subsequently be stabilized. That, that plan was submitted to the town, as I understand it. The plan was reviewed, we got the go-ahead to proceed, and that work was done in fairly short order. So the guardrail has been installed, that slope has been, I will say, partially stabilized. And what I say by that is, as you know, slopes don't stabilize overnight, and so my understanding is that there's some matting on the slope at current...
And shrubs.
Matting and shrubs. But it is, it is mid-October, so the, the shrubs and greenery are not going to grow overnight, but the objective would be that that slope over a period of time will, will stabilize. And of course, the, the guardrail will exist long-term to provide for safety. In, you know, in terms of the outlet on the property, in terms of future stormwater, you know, it, it may have to be that we continue to monitor the situation. If we find there to be continued problems with respect to the use of our parking lot, we're going to have to address them. But again, the only point that I suppose I would make for the board's benefit is, it's not our stormwater. So it, it presents a bit of a challenge in the sense that, you know, yes, anything that falls onto the slope and ends up in our parking lot is, is, is our stormwater. But anything that ends up on the slope because it's, it's via an outlet onto our property from adjacent property, or because it's sheet flowing onto our property, is not our stormwater, but it's a problem nonetheless that needs to be dealt with. So I've had some, and I'm having ongoing discussions with my clients about, you know, ways to, ways to address that. But in terms of the immediate concern that was raised by the Butters in that letter you're referring to, we think that we've, we've addressed it, and it is continuing to be addressed through the, the longer-term stabilization of the, the slope in that corner of the property.
Okay.
Anything you want to add to that, Hushin? Yes, please.
As you know, it was raining today and day before yesterday, and rather, especially if you said the rain was heavy. So in order to avoid more erosion and wash off of the new backfill that we did on the slope, and the mat that we laid, and the shrubs, you can see the shrubs actually that we placed in, we created a soil on our property to manage to control the runoff from the Butters up, up above the slope, and bring it onto our site and towards one of our closest catch basin. So in order to avoid the wash off and, and further, further erosion. So it, it was an issue which was not really created as a result of any activities on the subject property, but whatever the reason might be, we tried in a short period of time to address the issue and control this runoff. You know, especially from the drainage outlet that comes out off of their catch basin up top. They have a catch basin right in the middle, it's a low point, and collects and dumps on the subject property, and trying to make that a concentrated through a soil that we created and bring it onto our system.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other thoughts on that? Evan?
I would just say that as far as the building commissioner is concerned, Jose Negron, the vehicle safety barrier issue is resolved. That was the only issue that he was focused on.
Okay. Thanks. All right. There is a traffic study in here. Do board members think we need a peer review on it?
Can I just ask, and how many apartment units are going into this?
15.
Okay, because the Board of Health said 14. Something else, I thought I saw 20, unless I'm seeing 15. So just wanted to make sure I had the numbers right.
Correct, it's 15. It's two, two studio units, 12 two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just briefly regarding the, the traffic study, it's, it's actually less of a study and more of a memorandum or an assessment. It's not, not a full traffic study, of course, just judging by its length. You know, the objective here was to highlight that, you know, we have a site that has been vetted before, that has two hotels and an adult daycare. We're adding a 17, 1800 square foot restaurant and 15 apartments. So yes, there will be some additional traffic, but the traffic is, hesitate to use the word negligible, because it sounds like I'm downplaying it, but it's, it's not significant in scope, in, in terms of comparison to the overall use of the site or use of adjacent properties. So I guess I'll leave you with that.
I'm not, I don't think we need peer review.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I think at this point, do members have any other comments or questions? So I think at this point, we would be looking for updated plans, a discussion with the school committee, our school department, about the bus stop. I think the, looking at the snow storage again to protect the smaller areas of landscape Any other thoughts?
Should have an itemized landscape plan.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too.
Or updated landscape plan, focusing on the slopes.
Anything else? All right. Do you think that would be doable by our next meeting?
It may be. I just want to be certain that I can be available. When is your, when is your next meeting?
November 12th.
November 12th. I think we do have another one.
November 26th.
Yeah, November 26th.
Is that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving? Or is that after Thanksgiving?
I don't know.
We'll have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Is it the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving is the 27th day, I'd say, before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so we're not having it on the 26th.
So it's likely we'll have one in November and one in December, because the second December one is Christmas Eve, too.
Yes.
So my, my client tells me that he thinks he can get that additional work done between now and November 12th.
Okay.
What I'll tell you is, we won't waste your time if we're not ready. We'll submit a continuance request in advance.
Okay.
But I'm available as well. So if we could, if we could continue the matter to the 12th, we'll, we'll hope to have updated plans to you. How far in advance do you prefer those plans be submitted prior to your meeting?
Ideally, the Wednesday before, at the very latest, the Thursday, so that we can get it to the board members on the Friday to review it over the weekend.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Well, do we need to open the public hearing at all?
Oh, yeah, we do need public input. Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, I will take any public comment. Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I move to continue to the 12th of November, is it? Was it the 12th of November?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, I have received a request since the 195, 191, 195 River Neck Road and 133 Princeton Street has many of the same players, and I've had a request to take 133 Princeton Street first, so we will do that one next. Princeton Street first, so we will do that one next.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas DeShane from Finneren and Nicholson, representing the applicant. You will recall when we were last before the board, we were here on a request for a modification to address changes to the building, some of which were done, as you know, prior to our modification request, and others, fortunately, we were, you know, seeking the modification approval prior to the changes being made. And as we explained, I didn't have an excuse for that when it first came, we weren't made aware, myself and Katie weren't made aware of it until there was a problem, and so we jumped back in. So the board had requested that the applicant and his development team, his contractor, his architect, appear before the board so that you could ask them the questions you want, and so they're here this evening and would like to make a statement to you and address your questions and whatnot. So what I'd like to do is let them speak, and then when you've been through that, I will come back up, or Katie and I will come back up and go through the actual physical modifications that we're discussing. But with that, I'd like to, Dean, can you come up and?
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Chairman. So my name is Vasant Nohon, but most of the people refer me to as V, because it's easier. I am a resident of the North Chelmsford and the owners of the Chelmsford Wine Spirit. I am very excited to have the building, to build a store closer to my home, closer to home, and to be able to contribute to the community. I'd like to thank the town and the community for their support and the opportunity to create a store that better serves our needs. I'm here to, I'm here today to apologize to the planning board for making changes to the original design of the building without informing the committees. It was never my intention to disrespect anyone or hide this information from you. I modified the design to ensure practicality and functional operation. I did this because I was unaware of the necessary protocol. I hope you understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Belansky, appreciate you having me here. First of all, I wanted to say that it's exciting, and I'm grateful to be the general contractor of MTL Construction for Mr. Nohon, and to be working with the town of Chelmsford. All of the officials have been very gracious in accepting our, you know, our presence in the town, and I want to assure you that it was not our intention to ignore the plans and the approved plans by the planning board, and that once we became aware of the miscommunication, we stopped all work on the elements that were not approved in the original plans. So we appreciate, I appreciate, the opportunity to work in the town of Chelmsford, and for my client, Mr. Nohon. And, you know, again, I'm here to apologize that, you know, we deviated from the approved plans.
Good evening, everyone. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson. I want to let you know also Jim Jozokas, our architect, is here tonight, if you'd like more of a walkthrough as to the changes of the different facades on the building and the inclusion of the rooftop area, as it relates to the site plan, since we were here last time, we've again continued to work with the architect and the builder and the developer regarding the architectural elevations, to continue to refine them, to make sure that what you see before you today is what's indeed being built. So there's been a couple of small modifications since we were here previously, some of them relate to the frontage of the building, as it relates to some overhangs and some plantings. So I'm going to just come, if you could go to the landscape plan, just a couple more sheets. So here, along the front of the building, there's two awnings, one awning here over these parking spots that comes out in front of the building to allow for loading and unloading, and then there's additional awning across the front of the building, which is a different frontage element that we had proposed previously, that comes out here over the sidewalk to protect people along the sidewalk. I was concerned about the plantings here at the last meetings, we had taken those out, but since then, we have looked at the height of the balcony, which I believe is about ten or eleven feet along the front of the sidewalk, and talked to the landscape architect about the choices, and he said they'll be fine along the front of the buildings. We were able to put that landscaping back, and so the awnings that we're showing on the site plan that you have before you are what is being built out there in the field. And then if you can just scroll back to the layout materials plan, MTL Construction let us know last week that, this isn't the newest plan actually, can you go to?
I don't know if we have it.
Yeah, that modified site plan at the bottom.
This will be okay.
And then, in this area here, so we're having trouble getting gas, so the developer, working with the contractor, they would like the store to be open this fall, in time for Thanksgiving, if possible. The latest we've heard on gas is spring of next year, which is horrible for a property owner looking to open a business. So we've been working with the contractor and a propane supplier to create a temporary situation in the back parking lot within three parking spaces. Again, it's only temporary, to allow for propane tanks to sit here. We've worked with the gas company to make sure that the pad dimensions and the bollard locations are correct and the sizing, and they'd be bringing the gas line from the back of the building to the gas entrance point of the building, and that would be a temporary situation until we can get hooked up to the gas that's in the street. So we've modified the plan to show this temporary situation here. Those three parking spaces will be put back as soon as that temporary situation goes away. And I think you'll remember, at the last couple of meetings, what we spoke about in relationship to the parking is because we've eliminated that basement floor, we are better parked than we were as far as the original approval, so we're not concerned about those three spaces, and again, it's just a temporary situation. If you'd like some more information, I can certainly have Jim come up. I don't want to waste the sport's time, I know we have a complicated and long agenda, so be happy to have Jim come up and talk a little bit more about the different facades of the building. I think Evan, if you can pull them up, I'll just maybe have Jim come up briefly.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Jozokas with Jozokas Architecture Incorporated. A lot of the changes on the exterior were fairly obvious, I guess.
There is a mic right above you, right in front of that, so you're going to stand there, yeah?
Oh, perfect. Thank you. All right, so the biggest thing internally was that the basement was eliminated, so a lot of the stuff got pushed up, things got pushed up even further. The exterior elements, the brick stayed the brick, but we carried in the new solder courses and over the windows versus maybe a steel header, a couple of awnings, a lot of the windows schemes have been changed, the awning in the front also came into play when the owner V was very concerned about his customers being able to park their vehicles and have his employees wheel out on dollies and load up the back of the vehicle with boxes of wine or whatever in clement weather. Like today was a perfect example, that would be very functional for that need. So I'd be happy to address any other questions or concerns, that's basically the gist of it.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll go around, Marcy.
Nothing right at the moment, but I might come back to it.
Okay. Deirdre?
I'm okay.
Anita?
So I've got a couple of questions. My first question, I still don't understand how, like where the, where we dropped the ball about coming back to the town for modification. Like, I understand that you guys didn't mean to do that, but I'd like to understand what happened, so we can avoid this in the future. Was it, like, someone came and asked for, we changed our mind, and we decided to just, like, where did you guys break down, I guess?
Well, I, we've obviously, Katie and I have had a number of conversations with the team here to try and figure that out, and it's not as, I guess, complicated as one might think. In one instance, let's start with the awnings. V, again, you know, thought about it and said, geez, you know, I really would like to have these awnings done. So he called Jim, said, Jim, I need you to design a drawing, and they did, and then Jim would pass that on to Bob, and Bob said, oh, okay, you know, we did it. And again, like with the windows, you know, the more, as the building was going up and V was looking at it and decided, you know, to have all those windows to the back of the registers, as we talked about before, you know, he said it would make much more sense to do it this way. And it seemed like it was just one, what appeared to be one minor modification at a time, and yet, you know, V didn't understand that changes like that to the building, as modest as they may seem to him, you know, we're just changing a window, why would, you know, or moving windows, or putting an awning. You know, again, I think the process was that as each change and thought came up, you know, the actual construction team and the design team would design it and build it, and quite frankly, none of them took the opportunity, Anita, you know, you're asking how did it happen? Quite frankly, none of them took the time to think. Again, you know, I don't think V fully understood modifications required to come back, and obviously, the developer and the architect didn't raise that question. So nobody raised a question, as we mentioned before, this was long after Katie and I, who probably among the team knew best not to do anything different without coming in, and yet, we, you know, there was no indication that there were problems, you know, they were working with building inspector, you know, and he saw no building code problems with any of that, until such time as they made some major modifications, and then he said, wait a minute, you guys have now gone beyond the pale of, you know, minor site modifications or little, you know, construction changes. You've now eliminated a basement, you know, you've added some height to the building, and that's when he issued cease and desist. And that's when my client did pick up the phone and called Katie and I and said, hey, you know, we did something we weren't supposed to do. Anita, in terms of, you know, I honestly believe this was not done intentionally, or as V said, as a way to hide something from you, because, I mean, no one could ever think that, because you've got a building inspector who came out regularly, checked to make sure that things were going right, and as soon as he saw they had deviated, he pulled the plug. So no one would ever think, hey, we can get away with this, you know. So again, I don't think it was malicious, I don't think it was intentional, and you questioned, you know, you guys want to understand how this happens, and I know it's been happening far more than you would want, you know, recently in town. I've heard of other projects that have sort of gone the same route, and very possibly, they gave you the same answers we are. And I think it is a function of miscommunication on our part as a development team. I have certainly learned a lesson that from now on, when I get something approved, and I hand it over to the builder and stuff, I'm going to make sure everyone in the team knows, do not put a nail in the wrong place until you ask us, or, you know, go to the town to say, is this the kind of change we could make? And I think, but for that not being drilled into people's heads, and I don't just mean us, I mean all of the projects, I mean, we all see it, right? You see it, it's right in the decision, if you're going to make a change, you've got to come back, right? We even make the developers and the architects and the clients read those decisions, but I just don't know if that is necessarily the best way to, you know, provide them that notice and warning. Like I said, from a personal note, I made it a habit now of telling anybody, everybody, follow your plans, or, you know, call us before you do anything wrong, but obviously, that hasn't been enough, or we haven't done it enough. So again, maybe as the permitting attorney that got the permits, I can take some blame for that, and I've learned a lesson to make sure that my clients are better educated, you know, in this. But again, I can only say, I can't believe for a minute any of this was intentionally done to hide or get away with anything, because no one could ever think that way, when you've got, you know, regular inspections, we're going to have to have a sign-off on the as-built, I mean, you know, there's no hiding stuff like this. They just didn't think it was an issue. So that's, Anita, the best, you know, that I can come up with, and again, I know you guys have dealt with this on other projects, and perhaps you've heard the same thing, but at the end of the day, it is our mistake, and, you know, we need to not only address it here, but be sure it never happens again.
Appreciate that. My next question is, did, I thought the last time you guys were here, I heard that there would be some, did the use change? Like, are we doing some distribution or warehousing?
No, this was always, so there was always one floor that was basically dedicated to storage, and so essentially, the top floor is dedicated to storage, not the top, top floor now, the area that we're looking at doing tastings, but the second floor and the basement were always considered to be storage, and it's not for distribution, it's for purchase, it's for V to have supply for his store.
Use is going to be just retail?
Retail.
Retail, okay, we're not, we're not...
No, there's, it's not a distribution facility for alcohol.
I thought you mentioned something about supplying other, like restaurants and stuff like that?
No.
No, the last time you were here or something, not necessarily distribution, but like you were supplying.
No, maybe they would be invited to the tasting to try out new alcohols, I don't remember that being talked about, though, but yes, there is significant storage on the site, but it's for use for V and his retail, yes.
Anything else? Okay. John?
Just a question, the temporary propane, did you say that was used for temporary heating during the winter season, or was that for another use? I just didn't catch the use.
Yeah, that's for just the entire gas use for the building, is it just heating? I'll let Bob come up.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, the intention of this is to substitute for national grid's supply, natural gas supply, which we applied for in March of this year. Because of the upcoming highway moratorium on November 15th, it's highly unlikely we're going to have natural gas, even though we're ready to start heating the building. So this is a substitute, it is temporary, we still expect national grid to provide gas, or national grid, yeah, but needless to say, the road's open April 15th, and if it's cold winter, we've got to have heat, so that's the intent of that, but it will come out eventually.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Joel? Mike?
Just, I presume the fire department will get their say on the propane tanks.
I had a couple of questions. Noticed this on the other, the last plans too. There's a truck lane. I wasn't involved in the original design, so I'm just curious what the truck lane in the back is for. Is that for loading and unloading or is that for turning radius?
Turning radius.
Okay.
Yep. So yeah, we need this area to have nobody park there so that the.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. And then the other thing I noticed, on the renderings that we saw in September compared to the renderings we're seeing here, there's even a more of a decrease in windows on three of the sides of the buildings. And I'm a little bit concerned about that because we raised the objection to the decrease in windows at the last meeting. And if you look at the, if you compare the architectural plans of, that we're seeing tonight compared to the ones that were presented in August or September, it's still a, it's yet another decrease in windows.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up after, but like I drove by this the other day. I'm not a big fan of this building. Like I don't find it very attractive and nor do I find that it adds value to the neighborhood. I think having the more of the windows makes it more inviting. It looks like, that's why I was questioning the distribution or like what the intent of this building was supposed to be because it feels more like a warehouse like this without the windows.
The, yes, the, instead, definitely is the eye to behold. The portion of the storage was down in the basement. Like most products, don't like sunlight. That's why a lot of liquor products are stored in not clear bottles, but in a dark bottle. So the products were originally supposed to be all in the basement. The structure had to be beefed up significantly to bring the product stored into the second floor. The elevator is not just your typical elevator, it's a serious elevator that can handle power jacks of these volumes of liquid to be transferred to the second floor. And hence, a lot of the windows went away because it's just storage.
But in the front? It's, I thought it's a storefront?
Yeah. On the first floor.
Second floor of the front.
Second floor of the front, yes.
First floor of the front. Explain, you had also mentioned the steel.
Yes, the, the structural engineer designed the steel system and it had a cross bracing system to stabilize the structure that runs in the front of the building. Is, I had a little control over that, but when you have a giant X crossing through the middle of your facade, eliminate the windows or you're staring at a giant steel X.
Is there a way to make faux windows or panel-like material that looked like windows to break up some of the significant brick on that facade?
Especially facing the street, like.
Are the elements above the windows, are those brick elements now?
Yes, the, yeah, those are, yes, the, can we? Of course. I don't know how the client wants to do that. Are you amenable to? Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So in answer to your question, we can do anything. But the practical, for a practical matter, what you're seeing right now when you drive by it is missing some of the elements that I think enhance the design, in particular the canopy along the front. So we've stopped construction of that because it wasn't part of the approved, original approval. With regards to the other windows, if I may, to Jim's point, the structural bracing here was mandated by the increase in the loading on the second floor, as is the case on the sidewall. So as you probably know, this faces the car dealership and there's really no visibility at this back, back portion of, or this side portion of the building from the street. This is what's visible. Getting back to this portion, these windows here happen to be located where the bathrooms were and appropriately, we reduced the size of the windows so that, you know, viewing in there wasn't, wasn't large. The other consideration is that the building code requires a certain height above the finished floor in order for, so people won't fall through the windows. So you've seen some of the windows get smaller as a result of that. You have to have a, a three-foot threshold, if you will, at the windows in order to meet the building code. With regards to full windows, I wasn't being facetious, but we can put full windows in, sure. They, they, it will require, it will require some reconfiguration of the brick to meet these conditions here. It would be a lot easier if we didn't have to put a roll lock or, or a roll lock brick course above the windows, but we certainly could make something appear the same as those windows, if you, if you like.
Yeah, can't you just, we, since it's not done, can't we just put the, like we can figure the layout, the bathrooms and put the night bigger windows for the storefront up front? I would think you would want to showcase at your store so people know that. Like it just doesn't make, like it doesn't look like a store to me. It looks like a brick.
Storage facility.
Storage facility. It looks like a warehouse, sorry. And you're asking us to bend over backwards for your mistake?
I'm not.
But, but.
The whole team is.
The whole team is. But let's be clear, when you guys made these modifications all along, and I would have expected minimum, the developer to know that if you're making, you're doing up plans because you're making these changes, you're talking to engineers, someone of you, somewhere along the line should have had the experience to say, hey, we needed to go in front of the planning board before we spent a dollar doing this. So, you know, I don't mean to be difficult here, but I, I really don't like a warehouse on Princeton Street. If this is a store, let's make it look like a store and make it attractive. It only would help your client for attracting business.
I guess what I've heard is that we are, you know, we can do something. We can make some changes to make it look better. I, with the exception of the windows, I think they've actually done a good job of breaking up the massing and scaling in the front of the building. I like the tower. I think it is, is attractive. I think the awning will really make a big difference in eliminating that brick thing. But how would you like us to effectuate proposed changes? Would you like us to come back to you with a, a front, a newly designed, not designed, but a, I guess designed, front facade that would show you how we could put these faux windows or perhaps some other kind of architectural something that, you know, might help with the concerns of masking and scaling? Is that what, I mean, they're, they're asking us to make a, a showing of what we might be able to do.
I, yeah, I think that's at least what I'm hearing is that it would be good for you to come back with a proposal for some improvements to, maybe they're not actual windows now, but something to make it look more like the approved designs. I'm also looking at Google Maps and I am noticing that that front side is completely visible from Princeton Street. The back of that building is not, but that corner is. And it looks like a solid brick wall. So I think.
Can we go back to that side plan just so I can articulate?
There's also, sorry, there's also significant landscaping that's proposed on that side and now along the front too. So I just want to bring that up also, that you're looking today at bare soil adjacent to the building. And there'll be, the intention is to have that on, along the front of the building, to have plantings that will grow along the frontage and cars positioned along the frontage of the building. And then along the side of the building, we have plants along the entire property line.
So as far as this side goes, and I'm just trying to think of what you're asking us. You know, originally, we had two windows up above, full-size windows, two full-size windows down here. So in my mind, and again, I'm, I can't commit for my client, but I want to understand how I'm going to explain to them what you would like to see. So I want to make sure I understand it. Clearly, some kind of window, you know, to recreate this look, especially out on the outer point of that side would help. I, I also think, you know, maybe bringing this awning back in on that corner would really bring that whole corner together.
Yeah, because that front corner is part of the storefront.
Right.
And so.
I mean, I don't think we're technically missing windows here, other than the fact that we had to reduce those size because it's now a storage area. But I mean, specifically with respect to this, it would seem to me that if we could potentially bring the awning back around and put some kind of faux windows, that would, that would recreate this. Although it's even nicer because I think this is a much better design than that. As far as along here, and again, because it is, is storage and we really don't want light coming in, I, I suspect this might be an area where we could fill this in, maybe not to that density, but, you know, the smaller window, you know, the full windows here. Because if we can make them look like that, the fact that they're not windows is, you know, it, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Because you, they look like windows. So I, I think we'd like an opportunity to go back and, and bring you a, you know, an attempt or a proposal to try and address that.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes. I did have one other question.
Sure.
The third floor.
Mm-hmm.
Has that design changed since we were last shown any?
No, right? We haven't changed that design of the very top since.
Because this, if you look at the designs here, it doesn't show the fence railing anymore. And if you go to the next link, that rendering seems like it's set further back or not at the edge. It looks very different than the last rendering.
The what? The rear elevation or the left side?
Both.
Okay, well, we'll, we're going to have to, we're going to have to sit down with people.
Excuse me, Doug, I can speak to that. Mr. Chair, the previous plan was the, one of the issues that was raised by Mr. Mayron is not in compliance with the previously approved plans. So what, what you're seeing in this, this plan here is something that we've constructed in order to comply again with building code. There's a, the elevator vestibules here and building code requires roof access. We have a stairwell there. So this, the current structure is what was being shown on the new drawings. The intended structure is the one with the balcony. However, we stopped, you know, constructing that portion of it because of the cease and desist order.
So what is being proposed?
Well, I think, I believe what's being proposed was the previous plan showing the railings and the, and the penthouse area.
Okay.
At a lower elevation.
So.
We probably need to finalize this.
Yeah. So whatever is being proposed for that needs to be shown. If you look here.
Right.
This looks very different than the current plans.
Correct.
Yeah. So whatever the design is, that is.
We got to bring you plans that show our attempts to restore some windows and what the true final, final, final plan is. We appreciate the opportunity to do that.
I've got one more question. Are you intending to, so are we still doing the tasting area on the rooftop? Is that still the intent?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Does that need a different liquor license with the state? Do you plan on doing something like that?
We discussed that at the, what we discussed at the last meeting, that we thought Evan had said that they didn't want to see us until after we had committee board approval.
No, no, I know, but.
For a modification to the liquor license.
I just don't want someone to forget. And you guys start your business and you're doing something up there that you guys don't go and get your, I just wasn't sure. I thought someone had said that you'd actually need a different type of license for that. So I just want to make sure you're aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the case and you don't, you know, we don't have another oops like the building.
No, and that would be an oops before the Alcohol Beverage Commission and.
That would be a big oops.
That would be a major problem.
Yep.
Technically a loss of your license.
Right.
Any other questions, concerns, topics? Okay.
Can we stuff this in till the 12th?
I would just like to say, I feel completely muddy about what's happening on the top floor.
Yeah, I'm a little.
That's why.
We'll give you a presentation, we'll come in and give you a presentation. I know you're hot-pressed and if I don't have the final plans in front of me, I don't want to present anything.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
This is a public hearing, so I do want to open it up to the public for any comment, there being none. Would two weeks be enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we'll be here.
I will take a motion.
Move to continue to the 12th.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda, 191, 195 River Neck Road.
Let me just do a quick introduction. Dr. Shane representing the applicant, just like to introduce Kerry Pike. We, I assume we're going to jump right back into the finalization of traffic. And then once we finish that, then I'll come back and have a few things. But with that.
Doug, good to see you. Thanks, Doug. Good evening, Kerry Pike with Howard Stein Hudson. I have a few slides. We prepared some additional materials based on the chair's request at the last meeting. And knowing that we are pressed for time, I'm going to kind of skip ahead. I do have a site plan here in case we need it. Keep going, Evan, please. Just a reminder of the timeline, we submitted the traffic impact study with the application in June and we responded to the initial peer review comments the last time. I'm not going to spend, again, a lot of time to try to be mindful of how much time we have to talk to you tonight. Next one, please, Evan. So the new items that you asked about the last time were about truck traffic, pedestrian safety and school buses, sidewalk improvements and the intersection with Carlisle. And it's actually Carlisle Street, I just noticed. So to start with truck traffic, this is our existing count data. So on the top three lines is the data that we collected for River Neck Road. And so you can see this was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday count. So it ranges from two and a half to 3.1% trucks on River Neck Road on a weekday, so on a Thursday and a Friday, less as you might expect on a Saturday. We also did those same counts at 15 Progress Street and also at West Tech Drive in Tinsborough. You might notice Progress Street is significantly higher. Some of that is, I think, just the numbers, the volume in general. It's that if you add one to one, you get a hundred percent increase thing. Next, please, Evan. And that, those numbers are pretty typical of River Neck Road in terms of truck percentage. And then looking at our trip generation, truck estimates, this is just trucks. You can see the middle column is the IT. You can see the middle column is the ITE numbers, so about 22 daily. If we use the trip, the trip generation based on the West Tech counts that we did, we get similar numbers. And so that's based on the 37,800 square foot plan for this project on the right. Then, moving on to Riverneck Road and to safety, on Riverneck Road specifically related to, first, I want to talk about, we, we collected crash data. This is Mast Dot's crash data. 25 crashes from 2017 to the current time, so average of three per year. Of those, 18 were single-vehicle crashes. And in the reports, we saw failure to keep in proper lane, running off-road, distracted, inattention, physical impairment, reckless driving. None of those crashes involved what we call the vulnerable roadway users, so pedestrians or cyclists, and there were no head-on collisions in those crashes. And you can see the, on the side is more detail, just about surface, weather, crash type, lighting. Most of them were during the daylight. Most of them were on, in clear conditions. Next, please, Evan. We also did take a look, we got information from the school department about the school bus stops. So you can see those plotted here on the map. The site is roughly in the middle of the map. We've got the groups for the public buses, so one through nine. And then, the elementary-only buses are lettered in green. And so you can see, we've got a fair amount on either side of the site. And I'm gonna talk about some potential mitigation related to those in a moment. Just a reminder, too, that we do have the Mass General Law that requires folks to stop when the school bus is stopped and the lights are flashing. Stop signs out. We did review the curves on Riverneck Road using some record plans that the town had available, as well as aerial photos, to confirm the distant, the available width on Riverneck Road at those curves. We sent two folks out to take measurements. So we measured each curve, beginning of the curve, middle of the curve, end of the curve. And we prepared a series of diagrams. Those are in the packet that we submitted on Friday. We did look at five different vehicles. We looked at a Chelmsford fire truck, a school bus, a single-unit truck, a semi-tractor trailer, and a wide-body, wider-body pickup, so something like a duly, dual-wheel pickup truck. We didn't see any issues with vehicles are able to stay in their lanes with, again, we took those measurements in the field to confirm. And then, using our, our tech tools, are able to run those different vehicles. So no issues there. With respect to sidewalks, we did talk more to DPW. We understand you have a sidewalk prioritization plan that was developed in 2023. The top two priorities on that list are Westford Street and Riverneck Road as number two. We understand that's going to take multi-years, multi-construction seasons. There are, on Riverneck Road in specific, there are right-of-way challenges. There are trees, utility poles, et cetera, that are all going to have to be dealt, dealt with in order to put the sidewalks in. Potentially, also, that plan would include RRFB's rectangular rapid flashing beacons, it's a tongue-tangler, for safer crossings as well. Last time, we showed you this concept design for Riverneck Road and Carlisle Street that has the flashing stop signs with the placards that say, "Cross Traffic Does Not Stop." Also, actually painting the crossline, the cross, the stoplines, rather, and the word "Stop" on Riverneck Road, as well as installing a crosswalk on the eastern leg. What we also would propose here, which was a recommendation that we made, and I think that your peer reviewer will, will agree with. If you could go to the next one, Evan, please. So here's our mitigation list. The, under Riverneck and Carlisle, the top four bullets are things that you saw last time that are on that diagram. The addition is to add the intersection-ahead warning signs on Carlisle Street with the street name plaque beneath to say, so it would have the, it's a yellow sign with the cross, which is the intersection symbol, and then underneath it would say, "Riverneck Road." And put, to put reflective yellow tape on the posts, which just highlights for folks, especially at night. You know, because your lights glare off that tape, so you, you pay attention a little better to that, to warn the folks on Carlisle. We did also go out and check the site distance, and the site distance by Ashtoe is adequate. But that doesn't mean that there isn't, you know, still that curve. We can't do anything about the curve of the bridge over 495. So that's the suggestion to deal with that. And then, to deal with Riverneck Road, and specifically, you know, you have a lot of school bus stops. Obviously, you saw them all plotted there on the map. We would propose to install speed feedback signs. The, the project would contribute two of those. And we would work with DPW and the police on where they should be located. So those are the signs that, you've probably seen them, they're kind of popped up all over the place now, where it tells you how fast you're going. And then, it also has the speed limit sign with it. So, and depending on the type you get, they have some that, you know, when you're going over the speed limit, they go, "Slow down, slow down, slow down." And sometimes, they have some that give you a smiley face if you're going under the speed limit. So. We would propose to install two of those along Riverneck Road. We will provide a contribution, which Katie can talk a little more about if needed, for sidewalks along the frontage of the property. And those, also, your peer reviewer suggested some curve warning signs at the first curve, right around Collins Circle, the first curve when you come from Bill Ricker Road. That one seems to be kind of the tightest of the curves. So to install some warning signs, just reminding people that they do have a curve and to slow down. Okay, I've talked really fast. I don't know if you wanna, if you have questions for me, or if you want to hear from Mr. Dirk next.
Yeah, I think we want to hear from people.
He's in the room.
Excellent. Welcome.
Is this the first time?
He was on Zoom the last one last time. Jeff prefers to be in person, correct?
I, I do.
Very much appreciated.
Sunny, warm Florida last time, but it was warm here as well, so. I'm not sure where it was better. But anyways, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates, the peer review consultant for the town. So I think, just from the outset, what you've heard from the applicant is they've been very responsive to the comments that we've had on both the transportation analysis, but also the site plan. At this time, the site plan itself, they've addressed all of the comments. If you might recall, just quickly, in terms of looking at our substantive areas on the plan, really dealt with the turning maneuvers at the driveway, so making sure that the large truck could drive out without going over the curb. And then importantly, the fire truck, as it was maneuvering that, as it swings beyond the curb line, that there was no impediments to that aerial portion going over the curb line. So the applicants addressed all of, all of those comments. So the site plan, as we've seen, is, is responsive. In fact, they've also gone and added electric vehicle charging. So you'll see that in a number of locations within the site, which we think is a positive response to our, our comments. So as we left the last planning board hearing, and I think you heard from the applicant, we viewed, there were really five major topics that the board had asked that the applicant go back and undertake some analysis for, and you've heard kind of a summary of that tonight. I think importantly, in looking at all of those concepts, has really dealt with the safety of all roadway users, and especially pedestrians along Riverneck Road. And going through those, that's really the substance of the majority of those issues. And I think, as you've heard the presentation from the applicant, there's just a couple of primary things I wanted to point out with respect to Riverneck Road. The first is, you saw all of those bus stops, there's about 15 bus stops along that section of roadway. Now, as the applicant has undertaken that analysis, which you see them as looking at it, two other things. They seem, may seem disjointed from that, but they're really not. So truck maneuvering along the roadway, volume of truck, truck maneuvering. And then, then also looking at that crash data along the roadway itself. So as we're looking at those two things, first, starting with the truck activity. So today, there's about 2,900 vehicles on Riverneck Road. About 80 of those vehicles are heavy, what we call heavy commercial vehicles. So you saw, it's a little over, you know, two and a half percent or thereabouts. The project, as you heard, is going to add about 20 truck trips to that. So as you heard, the traffic engineer mentioned, as we look at it as a percent increase, you'd see a large percent increase. The volume increase is not large. But as you look at it in relation to, I think you saw, heard the example of one going to two, that it's 100% increase. When you have a small number of vehicles on the roadway, a small increase is more noticeable. So we just pointed out that there's definitely going to be more noticeable level of truck activity along that roadway itself. So that's one thing that I, I guess we point out just to keep in mind. But I think importantly, as we're looking at the crash data, so the 25 crashes that were reported over that time period, when you look at those crashes, a lot of them, as you heard, majority of them are run-off-the-road crashes. They're single vehicles driving off the road and striking a fixed roadside object. So the truck traffic, plus looking at the crash history, gets us to that point of bus stops and lack of sidewalks. So that's not something necessarily the project is going to exacerbate those conditions. But it's important, going back to that sidewalk prioritization, having curbing and having sidewalks along that roadway is important because that's going to keep the vehicles within the traveled way, because they're going to have a curb to the extent that they start to drift. They're going to have something that's going to redirect them back into the travel path. The second thing is, of course, the bus stops. We have curbing and sidewalks that provide some level of protection for the children that are out there. So it highlights that need for the sidewalks. It also speaks to the fact that people are driving too fast. They're driving too fast and they're distracted, and that's why people are driving off the road. Because when we look at that maneuvering analysis that the applicant undertook at the board's request, the vehicles stay in the travel lane. So if you're driving the speed limit and you're paying attention, you can drive along that road and don't have any issues. The alarm release, as was pointed out, it's driving too fast, driving too fast and being distracted. So when we're looking at measures to address that, that's what you see the applicant has done. So we, we're looking at traffic calming by way of those radar speed feedback signs. Those will provide some measure of information back to the motorists at all times of day as to, this is the posted speed limit. If you're driving beyond that, the sign's going to tell you that. But importantly, it's also pointing out to you that, that road is not designed for speeds above that speed limit. So it's trying to moderate the travel speeds on that roadway. The curb warning signs, as I mentioned, that is important. That one curb is very tight. As the trucks are maneuvering through there, the trucks never cross the center line. But that's the one location where the track, the tires actually just go onto the center line. So if you have a truck that's going faster than the speed limit, or is larger than what they've analyzed, that truck will potentially go over that center line. So that's why these things are really needed. Moderate speed and inform motorists of that tight curvature in that, in that area. Last thing with respect to Riverneck Road, as I said, sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks. It's very important that that happen at some point. The methodology the applicant has undertaken to provide a financial contribution is, is an appropriate measure. It's used in a lot of communities where you're soliciting monies to put into a future sidewalk fund. So it's basically, take the frontage of the property, times what the town's cost is to install a sidewalk. That comes up with a contribution, and then that gets paid to the town. The other approach is, you have each developer build sidewalks, but that creates these segments that don't go anywhere. So that's really not helpful, but the contribution can be helpful. So the applicant has proposed a, a contribution, and the methodology is, is appropriate. And again, it's something that you typically see. Lastly, as it relates to the Carlisle Road intersection, I know we had spoken about this before. As we looked at those crash patterns, the majority of the crashes at the intersection are exactly what was described, going over the bridge, southbound, striking a motorist on Riverneck Road, crossing. And so when we looked at that, it was exactly what the board had pointed out, which is, is there a site distance problem coming over that bridge? So the applicant undertook the site distance analysis. There really, actually isn't a site distance issue, but it, again, it goes back to, people are going too fast coming over the bridge, coming down to the intersection. And that motorist that's coming out on Riverneck Road, first thing is, their stop line is too far back. So they start to inch out, and then they go, and then the car comes over the hill, and they can't react to that. So the applicant has proposed moving those stop lines closer to the intersection, so that you'll get those proper sight lines. And then, the enhanced warning signs that they had mentioned tonight that we had recommended. So we think it's an appropriate package as it relates to mitigation. So, you know, happy to answer any questions you have. But as I said, the applicant has been very responsive, even to our suggestions for additional mitigation.
Okay. I think we do have a couple new letters in the packet. Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's okay. We can close out first. I just want to touch on the few things that weren't traffic-related from the last meeting. So Katie Unright from Howardstein Hudson. Again, we've made, as Jeff mentioned, we made some updates to the site plan based on some previous VAI comments. So the, those have been addressed in the site plan. But specifically, we went back and looked at the curb materials, and we looked at the curb materials that relate, as it relates to stormwater. So if it's uphill, we're not changing, you know, we're not looking to change the curb out. If it's downhill, and it's protecting, it's keeping stormwater in the site, and or keeping the stormwater in a flow pattern, we have changed all of that curb to sloped granite. And so we specifically looked at grading and the areas within the site that were essentially uphill next to us, and/or the water was not flowing uphill in that direction, and, and made those changes based on that. We added a crosswalk to connect the sidewalk at the front building to the sidewalk directed towards Riverneck Road, so we connected it out to the street. We revised all the snow storage to be on paved surfaces, so there's two areas that have been reconfigured on the site so that when snow is stacked and it melts, it goes through all of the BMPs prior to being infiltrated. And that's pretty much it on the plans. We did, as Jeff mentioned and Kerry also mentioned, we went through the policy as it relates to traffic and pedestrian hazard mitigation that the board has a policy for related to the number of parking spaces. And we did a calculation based on an estimate of the different classes of vehicles, and came up with a specific mitigation fee of $23,500. But then, we also looked at the mitigation that we're proposing to construct, and proposing to construct that mitigation is approximately $19,000. So we're looking to, certainly, if the town would rather us build the $19,000 worth of work and then provide the difference between the 23.5 and the 19, and/or provide the town with the 23.5 to do the work. Typically, I think we do the mitigation and then work with the board on that fee. Additionally, there was also a sidewalk fee that both Kerry and Jeff mentioned, based on our frontage. The work that we're already doing as part of the site plan, you'll see, we're already providing some curbing along the frontage and the curb opening. We're just under $40,000 for contribution to the sidewalk fund. So on top of that pedestrian traffic hazard mitigation, we also have $39,394. That's specific to the sidewalk fund for the site. So with that, without any question, if there's no questions on the site plan immediately, I'm gonna turn it over to Doug.
Hey, I guess I have a quick question for you, Katie. I don't really understand what the parking total, maybe I misunderstood what you just said. But I don't understand what the parking total and the mitigation total have to do with each other. It doesn't seem like that there's a cap at the 23.
No, there is a policy. So the planning board has a policy that talks about $200 per class one through three vehicles.
Right, right, right.
500, it used to be 100. That's specifically laid out under the section that is, the amount of mitigation shall be calculated as follows. So that's our mitigation.
The mitigation for, all mitigation for all safety is, that's capped at 23,000, is that what you're saying?
That's for create, creation of new parking spaces.
Okay, but the, okay, but the 19,000 is having to do with the safety mitigation, which seems to me completely unrelated to the parking.
So the, the, the parking space mitigation funds can be, they go into geographic areas. Each part of town has a dedicated account. And as, as you know, over time, DPW will come to the board and make a request to use those funds. So those funds are collected based upon new parking spaces.
Yeah.
Constructed. But they're not, it's not intended to cover required mitigation that a project creates. So what they're, what they're, what they're explaining or contemplating is, is that if you want them to physically build the project-specific mitigation, they can do that. They can also make contributions. But there's, there's sidewalk, and then there's also general transportation improvements that aren't necessarily directly related to sidewalks.
Right. And that, it doesn't seem to me that that's the same pot.
No, it absolutely has been historically used as the same pot.
Okay, but I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, let's save that discussion.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
Well, I think that also, just in regards to, to mitigation, what we're mitigating is more than just our project. We're mitigating the corridor that everyone uses for existing conditions that are there regardless of if we're built or not.
Right, which wouldn't be in. Right, which wouldn't be impacted by a less impactful project.
That's not true.
I don't want to get into this discussion yet.
That's fine. Okay.
We'll be plenty of time for that. Anyone have any specific questions on the plans before we continue?
Want to back to the traffic?
We will, but I want to take the easy stuff first.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions on the plans? I do have one question on the EV charging spot. It looks like it's in the handicap spot.
So it's required to be in the handicap spot if you provide one. The rest are, the ones we're providing are EV, are to be EV ready.
Ah, okay.
There's only one being proposed to be built, and when you propose one, it must be within the handicap spot. So there are, I believe, 10% of the spots have been put aside as EV ready, so they'll be ready to be installed.
Got it.
When needed.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are you guys all set? Do you have anything else to present?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Well, first of all, I appreciate you asking whether the board had any questions on the plans, and I'm going to ask you whether you have any further questions or requirements from us in terms of submitted data. Because, you know, I'm going to go through this wrap-up.
Well, I think we, we still have some, we still have some new letters that came in, so I want to make sure that those get read in. I think we still have a lot of questions in terms of information that we're trying to gather, so, related to the traffic. But I wanted to make sure that we cover the, the new letters and we have some additional questions.
By all means, that's why, that's what I'm saying. What are your additional questions and so that we can answer them?
Okay, we'll get there.
And obviously, you want to read your letters. So I'll step back.
Okay.
Read the letters, then please ask us questions, and then I just have a closing statement.
Oh, yeah, we'll get there.
I don't believe any new letters were posted to the agenda. Do you have copies of these letters?
They're links, they're all links in the new documents.
Oh, just this letter, these letters from DPW, from the towns.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I checked earlier and there wasn't anything new from the letters.
Oh, no, not, not abutter letters, just department letters.
Oh, okay. First one's from the Board of Health. Dear Planning Board, I am writing regarding the proposed project by Commonwealth Construction and Utilities Incorporated to develop an outdoor contractor's yard at 191-195 Riverneck Road. To date, the Board of Health has not received any communication from the property owner or developer concerning this project. We respectfully request that the Planning Board keep us informed on the status of this project and any developments involving the Board of Health. Additionally, please advise if coordination is required to ensure compliance with the Board of Health regulations outlined below. This proposed project is located in the Town Water Resources Iaquifer Protection Zone Two and the State Water Resource Protection Zone Two wellhead protection area. Therefore, this project would require approval from the Board of Health pursuant to the Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 7, Groundwater Protection Zone. This proposed project shall consistently comply with the Town of Chelmsford bylaw, Chapter 63, hazardous materials. Is designed to ensure comprehensive safeguards against hazardous materials that pose significant current or potential threats to public health, welfare, safety, and the environment, guaranteeing their safe management. This proposed project shall consistently comply with the Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 10, model floor drains. This proposed project has been approved by the Town of Chelmsford Department of Public Works to connect to Town Sewer. If this project plans to have dumpsters on-site, then it must meet Town of Chelmsford General Provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 5, Commercial Refuse, Dumpster Collection, Licensing, and Operation, Respectfully Donna Greenwood, Public Health Director. And then from the DPW, from Sheila Joyce, they basically say they've performed a review of the number of the materials that they list, and then I'll just read the outstanding issues not addressed. During construction, care should be taken to maintain separation of at least 10 feet horizontally from the edge of sewer services to the edge of water services. When a hor, where a horizontal separation of 10 feet is not practical, both services shall be installed closer to each other, but the water service must be 18 inches higher than the sewer service per GEP standards. See Massachusetts Water Loss, Chapter 9, Section 9.8. When sewers must cross underwater mains, the sewer must be laid such that the invert of the water line is at like, at least 18 inches above the crown of the sewer line. See water and sewer crossing for more detailed protocols if these requirements cannot be met. If applicable, areas on-site with slopes which exceed three to one must have stabilization. The long-term and perpetual care of the enclosed dumpster and dumpster pad, including the emptying, will be the responsibility of the property owner. Appropriate signage should be included in proximity to infiltration pond prohibiting snow storage. Confirmed number of trees to be removed from the ROW. Replacement of new trees within the ROW should be indicated on plan set, and the applicant will coordinate the tree replacement with the tree warden. And then the rest are various comments I think there were in previous letters.
Okay. Thank you. As I'm looking at my notes, I realize I have two more questions on the site plan. The page, C6, sorry, not C6, C7. It still shows that there's some snow storage near the building, if I'm reading that correct. Back up one. Yep.
Am I missing it? There's here, and then there's here.
And then there's a label with a black dot near the building for snow storage.
The label just came off. The, the label didn't come off, the area got from the.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, it's just a typo.
Okay. And then I noticed there was no stove storage in the front, so all of it's gone in the back?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Does the board have any other questions or comments on the, or questions for either of the traffic reviewers, peer, either traffic engineer?
I do.
Okay.
So previously, I asked what was the average daily truck traffic, and I thought the answer was 40-something at the time, but Mr. Dirk made reference to 80. And so I guess I would like to know what is the average daily truck trips currently on Riverneck Road?
So the, it's on one of the slides that I had, but yeah, the average, depending on the day, is, now I have to do math, so, to, let's see, yeah. So if you take the average of Thursday and Friday, so the, the multi-unit and single-unit combined on Thursday was 72. When you look at Friday, it's 90, so the average is 80.
Okay, okay. So, and that's, so we use that as a representation of what the average daily truck traffic is? I mean, there aren't adjustments or things like that that need to be made for that? Okay, so 80 is a good number to use. Okay, all right. Then the only other question I had was from Mr. Dirk, and I don't know if you remember, but we first met, I think, over 20 years ago.
Yes.
But I know you know the answer to this, and I know the answer to this too, but I'm going to ask you anyway, and that is, in your judgments as a traffic engineer, you don't consider adverse effects on neighborhoods from truck traffic. Is that fair?
So the way that we consider the adverse impacts is really looking at the, what the abutting land use is, and this is typical, if you were to, if the town had asked that like a heavy, heavy commercial vehicle exclusion study be done, and that's the Mass DOT has guidelines to do that, you look at the residential density along that roadway and then the percent of, of truck traffic, and it's a crude way of saying that if they, then I think what they establish is if you have five percent, if the, if the truck traffic composition is 5% or more, it's considered excessive along a residential roadway, and then you can look at measures to address the truck activity. So that's the way that that metric is really done as it relates to, to traffic engineering, but there's, there's other things to be looked at. We do consider it when we're looking at roadways, if there's a disproportionate amount of trucks, but really, when we evaluate it in terms of impacts, it's really looking at the safety of the roadway in terms of maneuverability, but also the speed of traffic on that roadway. So it, it's not an exact science in terms of measuring it, but that's how we do it.
Okay. And you mentioned in your comments that you said that the increase due to this project would be more noticeable.
Noticeable, correct.
And so what, what do you mean in terms of what constitutes more noticeable?
So if they, in terms of the passenger car, it really has to do with the size of the vehicles that makes them more noticeable. So you will notice the fact that on a roadway, if there's an increase, even if there's a small number of additional tractor-trailers, you will notice that more, just given the size of those vehicles and how imposing they are in relation to, if you had 10 passenger cars going by over the course of the hour, increase on the roadway, you probably wouldn't notice that over the course of the hour. If you have 10 trucks going by that aren't there today, that's going to be more noticeable to you as, as a homeowner. If you're just in your yard this time of year, at some point raking, you'll know if there's more trucks going by, you're just going to notice that, just because of the size of those vehicles.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's the, those are the questions I have.
Okay. Mike, do you have any?
No, I don't, actually.
Okay. John?
Not at this time.
Anita?
I, I just want some clarification. You said when you guys went out and looked at the, did the counts and looked at the trucks, you didn't find any, how many, so I guess how many trucks did you see? Was that the 72 and the 90? And you said you didn't see any crossing over the road?
We were not looking for that. We were strictly counting numbers.
Oh, okay.
That's, it's just a, it's just a tick, 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 tick. It's not a.
Okay.
It's literally done by the tubes on the road. They put tubes down because, because we want to get speed, and that's also how we get the classification. So it's not a person actually watching the trucks.
Okay.
It's just a, a machine counting them.
Then I thought you said that you, I may have misunderstood, so I apologize. I thought you said that, like, earlier, that there wasn't, you didn't notice any trucks crossing.
No, what I said is with our analysis.
Okay.
That we ran the, the models of those five different kinds of vehicles. Vehicles can all drive safely on all of those curves and stay on the correct side of the road.
Okay. So, but you didn't actually observe that, you just did it through your models? The reason why I bring this up, and you probably are not aware, but a couple of years ago, we had a big project on Riverneck Road where we had residents in the neighborhood, actually put cameras on people's houses, and we've got, I, I, I mean, all we have to do is call Armin, I'm sure he still has the videos or one of these guys have.
I have them in my email.
Yeah, I'm sure we have them in our email. Literally, truck after truck do not stay on their side. So I know your models may say that.
They can, but they don't.
But they don't.
But I, I would argue that that's human error and driver inattention, not the poor design of the road. Because they physically can, but they don't. Now, I would also argue that if they, if there were another large vehicle or even another car coming in the opposite direction, they would move over because we didn't see head-on crashes in our data, in our crash data.
Yeah, I think he also had video of the trucks going on people's lines too, though, on that, if I remember correctly. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no.
That gets, I mean, we're happy to.
We didn't observe, it was just machine.
Any other?
Okay, thank you.
Deidra?
I guess I just wanted to circle back around to the Board of Health. Like, where does that stand? Do we, I mean, I want to stay in our lane mostly, but I also just want to know, like, is that, are you guys presenting to them, or?
Yeah, we don't typically go to them till after we receive site plan approval. That's historic. And so we also, where we're connected to sewer, and we have a fully compliant stormwater system, honestly, there hasn't been an issue in multiple projects prior to this, but we don't go until we have a project typically.
Okay. I thought we were changing that.
That is being considered as part of the gap analysis.
Meant to be implemented when?
Those initial recommendations should be forthcoming any week now.
Anything else, Deidra?
No.
Marcy?
I'm kind of, I sit where Anita sits on this, like, I mean, we can look at data analysis and stuff like that, and like what a computer says a car can do. Yes, some of it's human error, but some of it, you know, it doesn't matter. I can drive that street and still cross that center line, doing everything I physically can. I've been driving down it while there's trucks coming, and I move over so that I avoid a truck. And I'm not seeing the truck going down that, you know, at an excessive speed, so even going at, at speed limits, sometimes even slower, they, you know, as they're making these curves, because Riverneck Road is not the best street to drive on at times, you know? So, yeah, a computer can say one thing, but going out and watching and seeing what's going on shows you what's really happening there, and that's an issue to be concerned of. It's, again, you noted on there, there's how many bus stops? I, I try not to go that way home because I get, I'm a school teacher, I leave when the, all the school buses are out there, and I sit there after bus stop, after bus stop, after bus stop, after bus stop. It takes me longer to go that way home than it does to come home on Chelmsford Street. So, you know, those are things that, yeah, a computer can tell you one thing, but being out there and actually watching it, not just say, I've waited two about and they counted the number of trucks, being there, seeing what's going on, watching these drivers is what makes the difference for these neighborhoods.
Thank you. All right. I have a couple of questions, very few, for the applicant actually, based on his operations. So the questions that I have are, how many heavy machines do you have in your fleet? Like front loaders, excavators, things like that?
I would say, off the top of my head, probably 15.
15? Okay.
We didn't submit all of that information.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember some of these numbers. And then the, do you expect to expand in the future?
Given the way the world is right now, we're pretty much where we want to be. I mean, we're comfortable where we are, we've grew slowly over the years, and, I mean, I'd like to say yes, but I, I realistically don't think we would.
Okay.
But I don't want to say that, you know, that could change.
And then how do you transport these? I know you said you don't bring them all back to the site. They go usually construction site to construction site. How do you transport those things?
They have trailers.
The trailers?
Yeah.
Okay. Do those trailers come back?
Yep.
Okay. So the trailers are, those trailer parking spots on the plans are what, where you would park those trailers?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
There'd be a trailer there, ranging from, you know, the bigger machines to like a bobcat trailer, you see a landscaper pulling around.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah. All right. So at this point, I think I'm going, if there are no more questions from the board, I'm going to open it up to the public for question, for comments, and then Attorney Deshane, I'll give you the opportunity to close, and then we can talk about how we're going to proceed. So anyone from the public wish to speak?
Hi, Eric Finney, Clark Ave. I'm not in a butter, but I'm pretty close. I'm on the other side of the, we're, it used to be Mercury Computers, we're adjacent to that. Now, I, I sat through the warehouse proposal that went over like a year. I see some similar concerns that are coming up here, mainly the truck, truck traffic, like not, not as much the volume, but I think just the presence of more trucks on a windy country road that doesn't have, you know, adequate sidewalks or safety. So my concern there is with the heavy truck traffic and safety. Couple things, I, I know we've, you know, listened to some of the, the traffic studies and the computer analysis saying that, you know, vehicles don't go, you know, like it can stay in the lane. I witness it all the time. I, I live on Clark, so my, my main route frequently is from 129 to Clark. So I've got a couple, at least two or three curves there between the 129 and the house. Last Saturday, my wife and I were going home from 129 to our street, and we watched a, a truck, I don't remember the exact size of it, it wasn't too big, crossover. on, on the curves, like, three times. I don't know what happened after that, but, 'cause we turned on our street. But it, it does happen. I think most people that live in, in that neighborhood are, are keenly aware of it and take precautions. It's probably why you don't see the accidents. I, I did see the note about the, you know, town's, you know, proposal for sidewalks, you know? I think it's great to try to make, make the neighborhood safer for pedestrians, because I used to run on Riverneck Road, I gave that up years ago, 'cause I had a couple of close calls. But the, if, if we have to do alternating sidewalks, sidewalks that alternate the side of the road, that, that's gonna, in my opinion, is gonna create more, more places for crosswalks, and I think crosswalks can be dangerous, because not everybody pays attention. I do like the, the blinking lights, like on Golden Cove. Those are great, so if we do end up going down that road, I would like to see that. I have noticed that, at least in the 129 to Clark Ave area, I have noticed a little bit of a slowdown in the speed overall. I think that's attributed since we put the, the speed posted. I appreciate that. I will say that on Mill Road, I was a little annoyed, but also liked the fact that they have speed humps. That, that's a similar road, it's an old country road, windy road, no sidewalks, except for like a few areas. I would hate to see speed humps on Riverneck Road, especially if we're gonna have trucks. Just be noisy, but anyways. Uh, let's see, hours of operation, just like the warehouse project is a concern of mine. I don't know if, you know, this is gonna be an op, a site that's in business on the weekend. I, in a prior meeting, I remember, there was some discussion about trucks leaving the yard at like five A, or between five and six AM or something, 'cause they like to get out early to their job sites. And I know the volume, you know, is expected to not be like a daily occurrence, but, you know, even on the weekend, if it happens irregularly, it's, it's still annoying. Mercury Computers was a good neighbor. So far, ProAV is a good neighbor. Really don't notice them at all. I hope that we can continue with that. Let's see. Uh, long-term, when I was thinking about like if a contractor yard went there and the, you know, the, the fact that, you know, there'll be equipment there, one of my concerns is that, I really don't wanna see it become a junkyard. And I'm not like criticizing, you know, contractor yards. It's just that, you know, over time, you get broken down equipment, maybe you don't have time for the, you know, to, to fix the equipment, or maybe you leave it there for spare parts. I would hate to see that. That, that's a big concern of mine, you know? Lastly, just some observations on the site plan. I noticed, just scale-wise on the site plan, there was a small area for the dumpster. I don't know with a contractor yard, I'm thinking they might, you know, the contractors might be bringing back debris or material that they need to get rid of. I don't know if that's adequate. I, I'm not an expert, but it just seemed kinda small, like it been the size of the property. The secondary snow storage in the rear, adjacent to the, you know, the back, I believe on the other side of the property is like deemed conservation, like a wetlands. It does slope down according to the topography on the site plan. I know there is sort of like a, a grade back towards the middle of the site. I assume that any meltwater would, would go into those, uh, storm, storm catch basins, I guess. But, but what's to keep? I was just curious, is there anything we can do to prevent the snow from being pushed too far back and possibly go, go over the property like a down the hill, or possibly melt into the, the wetlands? Any other observation was, I don't know if this is common, but the uncovered material storage, I don't know if depending on, is there like, you know, code for like, depending like what kind of materials you intend to store in, in those storage dividers? Do they have to be covered, or can they be left open? So, but those are some things that I noticed. They, they might be fine, but I just, you know, posing that question to, to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Campbell, Precinct Ten, Representative. Good evening, members of the planning board. I have a prepared speech. I'll try and read it the best I can. First, I'd like to sincerely comment, the, I'd like to condemn the applicant's team for their comprehensive and professional presentation. They have done an admirable job presenting this project, and they have almost convinced me to like the contractor yard and their commercial base. You know, you, you Doug and Katie, you guys have done, you know, even traffic study is, been impressive. I give a lot of credit to their team, and I hope they understand that my feedback this evening is nothing personal, but is rooted in deep concern for the long-term character and public safety of the neighborhood. I, I feel the best to understand the situation. We must roll back the clock to the late eighties and early nineties to discuss Mercury Computer Systems. The company that started in nineteen eighty-one with only two people, who were locals to our area, including the founder, James. Shortly after starting his business, Mercury Computer System moved to Lowell, and then right here to Chelmsford. As his business grew, so did the site and the buildings, and things were good. The company saw massive expansions. In the early two thousands, the property managing, the company, the property managing, the property management company that, that they rented from, in discussion with Mercury, decided it was best to acquire more land in case they wanted another building, which would be their third on the site. Hence the lot we are discussing tonight, which initially had a single-family home in the front of it. These locations were never really ideal for the size of a company such as Mercury, but they just grew into them. And it was cheap, which was important in the beginning. I am sure they would've been a lot happier on 129. Mercury was a good neighbor. As it grew, the neighborhood had little concerns because of the use developing advanced computer systems. Schematics was quiet, clean, and low-impact. This five-acre parcel was locked and held exclusively in case Mercury Computer Systems wanted to expand. That's why it was never developed. If Mercury Computer Systems did not call home on these sites, I am certain we would have single-family houses here. Mercury Computer System stayed for a long time, and in two thousand seventeen, they caught everybody off-guard and selected a new headquarters right off the highway, fifty-minute man road in Andover. Today, they are a publicly traded company, valued over four mil- billion, with two thousand employees. Our neighborhood, since their departure, has been stuck with this mess and the leftovers, and we are slowly starting to find the right path forward. Now we face a proposing, a use that is fundamentally incompatible with the organic growth model and low-impact history of this site. A contractor yard plus multi-tenant bays with heavy trucks, machines, is a heavy IA use, much greater than a computer company making schematics. I feel this location is questionable IA, because it is on the wrong side of the road, with no access to 129. I would strongly suggest this location is less industrial than my home, which is actually on the right side of the road. I think the applicant knows this, which is why they submitted a non-substantial land plot was done in effect to do a zoning freeze. This tactic permitted under state law locks the current zoning to prevent the town from making future changes. I believe if this was on 129, they would not have done that. I take this as a clear sign and admission of questionable zoning. One more. The proposed use fails the most basic test of the neighborhood compatibility due to its high impact on both environmental and quality of life. Public safety and traffic risk. The most critical issue before the board is the public safety on Riverneck Road. This is a twisty, narrow, winding road with no sidewalks. I drive a small car, and I often cross the center line. I have almost been hit walking on the road. I mean, I think we all know, we, we cross the, the center line, and I, I guess I'd like to, I didn't write this in my speech, but I'd like to address kind of why I think people do. Because the road is very twisty, and it's easier, if you're driving, to not, you know, big, a big swerve, to just kinda cross the line. So I think that's why people do it. A contractor yard introduces a volume of heavy truck traffic that this road cannot safely sustain. My submitted pictures show large trucks routinely driving way over the center line. In one photo, a pedestrian is forced to the edge of the pavement because the truck is passing so closely. This is an unacceptable risk to the people, to their lives, and their peace, and their children playing in this area. Noise pollution and visible light. This heavy IA use and outer end of the zone, basically being on the outer end of the IA zone, surrounded by residents, this operation will induce unacceptable noise pollution from heavy machinery, trucks, equipment, particularly early morning hours and weekends. This is a direct assault on the peace of our neighborhood, our residential neighborhood. Furthermore, an outdoor contractor yard is visually, visually bright. The site of stored materials, dumpster, machinery, fleet vehicles will create a major incompatibility and physical, and visually unattractive wall for our residential abutters, regardless of the landscaping.
Sean, are you almost done?
Yes.
Okay.
Aquifer protection. You are currently reviewing permits under the aquifer protection. This use significantly increased the risk of stormwater runoff containing pollutants like oil, gas, grease, construction from debris paved into our wellhead area. I got one more important thing. If you grant this special permit for this contractor yard, this use will always remain on the property. There is no going back. We have already watched this play out with Mercury Computer System. A company comes, stays, and eventually leaves. A future company will be permitted to use this site and to the absolute maximum, permanently dismantling the quality of life here. So if you permit this, the contractor yard, these guys could be great. They sell, they move, somebody else, they have this permit. I urge you to vote against this project and preserve the quality of safety and sustainability of the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I just may, just clarify a couple of points from Mr. Campbell. So, I just wanna mention, and I know Doug will probably mention this in his wrap-up, but this area is an IA zone, and we're actually surrounded by commercial and industrial uses on both sides and across the street. We understand that we are within an area of residences, and that's why we notified fifteen hundred linear feet from the site for our butters meeting before we started this process. The zoning in an IA district allows for contractor's yard with a Y, that's by right. The town of Chelmsford voted to allow contractor's yard in the IA zone. The aspect that we're here for tonight is the outdoor version of the contractor's yard, so contractor's yard in and of itself is allowed in this district. Regarding the zoning freeze, we did come here to protect the zoning, and that's because of the significant investment this family had already made prior to us coming here. They had already spent years working with the previous owner to come up with a purchase and sale and a plan and project to present to this board under the bylaws. And when we caught wind that the town might be changing the zoning, that whole investment would've been thrown out the window without protecting the investment that they already made. So it was only in their interest and in the interest of what they were doing to make sure that they protected what they had already looked at coming forward. Regarding some of the items related to lighting, certainly there's a lighting bylaw in the town of Chelmsford, which we have adhered to. We've also done extensive work to make this project the best possible project for the neighborhood using the industrial zoning. We have a very small building along the frontage, along the entire frontage. We're utilizing the topography for the site. The entire contractor's yard is hidden. You won't even know that it is back there when you look at the site. We have a one-story building that's residential in nature facing the street with a parking lot. All of the lighting meets the lighting requirements. The equipment is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet to the back of the site, and we've also kept a forty-foot tree buffer along the back of the site, which wasn't on the original plans between us and the highway, to help with noise pollution from the highway into the site. So I do wanna mention all of those things. We have also designed a very complex stormwater management system and have worked with both the town of Chelmsford, and will continue to work with the board in relationship to making sure the water that enters, essentially, that is infiltrated at the end of the day, is clean. And with that, I will, I just wanted to clarify some of those items, so I will turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Katie. You didn't say too many things I was gonna say, but a couple of good ones, though. So, as Katie said, we're here today for a special permit for the outdoor contractor's yard, proponent of this project. The, and I'll say it again, we're in an IA zone. Your IA zone allows contractor yard offices by right. It's only the outdoor component that we're required to get a special permit for. And let's talk about that special permit, because you have a decision to make as to whether or not we've met the threshold for obtaining that permit. It's not a question of whether you personally like it or dislike it. It's a question of whether we are meeting the requirements under the law. In order for you to issue us a special permit, it can only be done on a determination by this board that adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood. But those considerations must be based on facts and figures. The first consideration is the social, economic, and community needs served by the proposal. Community development is a positive action in all towns and cities. At one time, Chelmsford had a community development liaison, trying to bring businesses into this town to make development, and to bring offices into your office district, and industrial uses into your industrial zone. So when you talk about what ex-social and economic or community needs that are subserved, you know, economic development results in an increase in, in your tax basis. Currently, they pay nineteen thousand dollars a year in taxes for that piece of land, based only on an assessment of the expected construction costs, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six million dollars. So right there, you've got a, an existing business in town making a six-million-dollar investment in your community. So even if we take that six million dollars as an assessed value, but we all know that if you spend six million dollars building a building and a facility, more often, if not always, the assessed value is gonna be higher than that. But I'm gonna base it on a conservative estimate of six million dollars. That's gonna result in a, in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in additional tax revenue to this town. That's just property taxes. You still have to consider things like excise taxes on the vehicles and equipment. That's no small number. That goes to this town. And yet, this project provides no new residents and no new school kids to your, to your, to your school system. So, that money they're paying in taxes, which is a higher rate than residential, by the way, is more than gonna cover any services, town services, that this project requires. All right? We're not gonna commit to your school system or your other residential programs or anything else. Yeah, we'll, we'll need our share of fire and police, but I can assure you the hundred... But I can assure you, the $150,000 plus a year we're paying in taxes will more than cover that. The economic development also provides significant employment opportunities to this town and the residents here. You're going to build a $5 or $6 million facility. That's a lot of construction contracts. That's a lot of contractors in this area coming to work for a number of, you know, months or years to get this place done. Once it's done, the facility itself is there to support small businesses and contractors, which provides even further employment opportunities. Once it's built, they're going to have to maintain it. Somebody's going to have to come plow the snow and cut the grass and everything else. Guess what? Those are jobs available to local contractors. Then, on top of all that, these new employees, these new contractors, the people that are working there, where are they going to go eat? Where are they going to go shop at lunchtime? They are going to spend their money here in Chumsford. That's what economic development is all about. Bring businesses in, employment opportunities, taxes, spend money. All of your businesses will benefit from that. This is why cities and towns are always looking for economic development and to draw new companies in. And Chumsford is no different. They've been, in years past, have actively been trying to attract businesses. And when you're going to attract a business, if they want to come into your IA zone, that's where they're going to go. If they're going to go to your business zone, that's where they're going to go. Our clients chose to come to Chumsford, stay in Chumsford, in your IA zone. The other consideration is traffic flow and safety. And with all due respect, you have to look at the numbers. You have to look at the reports. Your own traffic people have said that our project, yeah, we're going to add some more big trucks. We're going to add a small number of total vehicles to the 2,900 that go through there a day. But there's nothing in these reports that show that we are going to create a hazardous situation or that we're even going to exasperate that situation. You can't say just because truck drivers drive illegally, too fast, to go over the lines or whatever else, you can't just assume that our extra trucks are going to do that. There's this old innocent until proven guilty. So you can't say, wow, you know, people, you've heard. The road's adequate. People can pass it without crossing the line. There's been no head-on collisions. Most of the collisions, all of the traffic stuff has, accidents have been, you know, single vehicles going off the road. I wish we had the number of how many of those were trucks. I bet it was very few, if any. It's probably mostly cars. You know, the fact that you've discussed that it's speed, that people are speeding, you know, the narrowness of the road, the questionableness of the bus stop locations, and, you know, the fact that mailboxes are on the wrong side of the street. How does that have anything to do with my client's project? Okay? That's a town of Chumsford should be looking at that and figuring out, hey, maybe we should put the mailboxes on the other side. Or maybe we should look, take another look of where the, you know, bus stops go. You can't look at our project and say, well, we got all these problems. Why would we let them build? The reason you let us build is because we've shown through our traffic analysis and your peer reviewer that we can, we will not exasperate those issues and we propose mitigation that will do an overall benefit to the current situation. So we're not making it worse. I think we're making it better. So the project will not exasperate the impacts of those infrastructure deficiencies that the town of Chumsford is, you know, responsible for. Perhaps with the increase in the tax revenue from this project, the town can actually put that money towards correcting those problems and providing additional protections to your residents. In other words, here's another opportunity for this project to help solve those problems. You cannot punish my client for the inadequacies of the roads where we have shown, where we have the same right to use the roads as everyone else. And again, we can make those issues significantly better and help to mitigate. Your next consideration, and the rest of these are pretty quick, except for one, the adequacy of utilities and public services. I don't think we've had any questions whatsoever whether we have the ability to have water and sewer. And this project will not impact public services in any substantial manner. Like I said, we might have a couple of calls to fire and police like everyone else does, but I doubt we're going to be using the library or any of the social services or the schools or anything else in town. So we're not impacting your utilities at all. In fact, we're providing between our water and sewer bills, we're paying our fair share for improvements to those systems. Impacts to natural environment? Well, we're not within the conservation jurisdiction. We don't even have to file with conservation. We have provided and maintained a significant amount of trees on the site. And as Katie has said, we've designed a stormwater system that meets all of your local and state regulations. So we've ensured protection of both the environment and your water resources. There has been no questions to the contrary here. The last, second to last is potential fiscal impact, including the impact on town services, tax base, and employment. Well, I covered that under the consideration of social, economic, and community needs. But let's face it, fiscal impact, this is a plus for the town. We are going to have very little impact on town services. We're going to increase your tax base and we are going to provide significant employment opportunities. And those employees are going to spend money in this town. So from a fiscal impact, this is a positive. The last consideration, and I think the one that you guys have focused on, as you should, is neighborhood character and social structure. Okay? Do you guys know what social structure is? Do you understand what, how you measure impacts on social structure? I didn't always, I had to research it to figure it out. Social structure is the aggregate of sound, social arrangements in society that are both emergent and determinant on the action of individuals. That's what social structure is. What I say it is, is the way we live, the way we operate, the way we walk through our lives. This project is not going to significantly impact the way people live their lives around us. Supposedly, they've always been diligent in protecting and being safe on the road. They're not going to do that any less with this project. Some might say they'll do it even more. But we're not going to have a negative impact on the way they live if they're currently protecting their kids and doing, driving correctly. We're not going to cause them to do that any less. But more importantly is the discussion of neighborhood character. I'll say it again, this is an IA zone. Not only that, but it abuts a highway. Both of the properties on either side of us, industrial uses. Across the street, industrial uses. So I can't agree with you when you say this is a residential neighborhood. At best, this is a mixed-use neighborhood where you have commercial and residential development. We are simply adding another commercial facility to the mix that's already there. We are doing it in the IA zone where this, most of what we're proposing is allowed by right. Now, residents will say that adding commercial is a distraction and it will take away from the residential neighborhood. Well, I will tell you that if I was building a residential neighborhood across the street from all these industrial uses, they'd be in here arguing that putting residences across from our industrial uses is detrimental to our neighborhood. Because now, we're going to get the neighbors complaining. There really is no distinction between residential and commercial in terms of your need to protect the rights. You need to protect your commercial builders' rights in the IA zone in the same way you got to protect the residential neighbors in the residential zones. This is a mixed zone. You cannot distinguish the two. Neither party has a priority. They have to learn or they have to function together. My clients have the right to do this project as long as we are protective. And we have done everything we can. Buffers, you know, the storage, the equipment, the neighbors are concerned about the lights and the noise. As Katie said, we've designed this site to put a building up front at a higher level. The whole site drips down and we've put everything out back. Everything's out back. Unless you look down the driveway, you're not going to see anything. We all know that. At the end of the day, you have to make a decision and you cannot be arbitrary and capricious in making a decision that you don't like it or that, you know, it's going to be unsafe. I don't care that the engineers tell me the road's wide enough and if people followed the law, it would be safe. You can't blame my clients if people choose to violate the law. So I'd ask you to really consider your job here is to determine whether or not we are, that the project is, through all this research and everything else, has proven to you and shows you that we are going to be so detrimental to the neighborhood, not the residential neighborhood, but the mixed-use neighborhood of IA and residential. To do that based on all the information we provide, you guys know what arbitrary and capricious is? You know, we don't want to go there.
So I'm sorry, are you saying that's a threat?
Anita.
No, I wasn't a threat.
It sounds like a threat to me.
Just let him finish.
Let him finish.
It's not a threat by any means, Anita. I'm just trying to explain to you the law. Because when I have someone at a board looking at me and saying, I'll never approve this, no matter what you do, I just think, boy, is that following the law? Is that arbitrary and capricious? I'm not threatening anything, Anita. I'm just asking you guys to understand what arbitrary and capricious is and don't bring this into your decision. You need to follow your law. You need to weigh these things based on the materials that we've submitted and then make a decision. And I think if you do that, you'll realize this project has been designed and proposed to address all of those concerns. It's in an allowed use in the zone for the most part. We're not damaging the environment. We've proven the traffic is safe. We've proven we won't have impacts on your services. We've proven the fiscal benefits of the project. You get to weigh all that and decide. I'm not threatening anybody. I've never threatened anyone, Anita, and please don't say I have.
Okay, well, just.
Now, that was a lot there. That's, I don't know why I got to there. I was just coming up here to summarize the effort you guys have given us, the opportunity you've given us, and to reiterate that we have been here from the 80s, families been here from the 80s. This is strictly an investment for us. It's not a build and flip. I plan on staying here. We've outgrown where we currently are, like we said in the past. You know, we hope that you see in the effort we put in over the last couple of months and really take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the way that we're going to proceed on this project and the way that I'd like to proceed on all lengthy, complex projects moving forward is after we finish reviewing all the information from the applicant, peer reviews, departments, public, we then have a discussion around potential special conditions that we would like to include in an affirmative decision. We do that before closing the public hearing. So that way, we can have a discussion and negotiation with the applicant if needed. So we don't have to open and close the public hearing. We come up with all of the potential special conditions that can be discussed and ruminated on and then close the public hearing. Once we finalize those, move to a vote where we discuss and deliberate based on the information we have, the potential special conditions, and then we vote. So that's how I'd like to proceed with this project and any of the other big ones that we continue to have. So with that being said, it is quarter of 10. We did go over the 45 minutes I allotted for the projects. So I would propose that we entertain a motion to continue to next meeting where we will discuss possible special conditions. So think about the special conditions you would want to include in an affirmative decision. And then we can discuss those, close the public hearing, move to a vote and deliberation, and then vote. Okay? Is that okay with the applicant?
So will that happen next meeting?
Yes.
How does it work?
Yes.
How does it work with the special provisions? Will you let us know beforehand what you're thinking so we can kind of counter?
No, because we can't, we can't discuss it either. So we'll all think about what special conditions we would want.
We'll do it here.
And then have that discussion in open public. Yep. Because one of the special conditions I may want, someone else may not want on the board, so we can't determine that until coming here. All right.
Is there any other information that we can provide you with in the meantime?
I have not heard any other questions. So I'm assuming from the board members that we have all the information that we need. Okay? All right, so I will entertain a motion.
To continue to the 12th.
Yes, November 12th. Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is Stedman Street. And that is a request to continue to November 12th. Yes. Do we think that one is actually going to be ready? It will be ready. They're presenting to the commission on October 28th, to the Conservation Commission on October 28th. Okay.
So what do we have on the 12th? All of these?
Yes. Some will be faster than others.
We also have Chumsford Mall on the 12th, too.
Yep.
It's going to be quite a night.
Yep. It's going to be another long night. I will propose we start at 6:30. But it will be another long night. Hopefully, I will keep track of time again. Some will be longer than others, as I mentioned. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Aye, move that we continue 152 Stedman to the 12th of November.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. Community Development Director's report.
Five quick items. First one is the town's open space and recreation plan has been approved by the state. That's in the process of being uploaded to the Conservation Commission's website. Second item, Mike Escola from NIMCOG will be presenting the housing production plan to the select board this Monday evening. As you recall, the planning board has already endorsed that. Third item, you have a handout this evening on the citizen plan of training collaborative, fall educational sessions. Some of you have participated in those over the years.
I strongly recommend it.
Yep, strongly recommend it, absolutely. Fourth item, some recent inquiries have been at 136 and 150 Stedman. Those are industrial zones adjacent.
I missed that.
136 and 150 Stedman Street. Those are industrial zones in close proximity or abutting the Lowell City Line. Last item is we had the debrief with the state on the One Stop application. Simply stated, the application missed the mark. I certainly take most of that, not credit, but I certainly take most of that since I was the primary author. We've engaged or are in the process of engaging with NIMCOG to see what options exist to work with them similar to housing production plan or OSRP plan related to technical assistance. And as I mentioned, in lieu of the town finding $100,000, the scope may need to be revisited.
For two.
And there was no opportunity for, like?
So there are a variety of options to consider. We could wait until next June, reapply the One Stop, and then find out in October of 2026. One Stop, and then find out in October of 2026.
And do you have some idea about what would make it not miss the mark?
Yeah, 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 yep. One of the keys is having a detailed scope from a consultant. So that would help tremendously.
So could we develop that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the question for the board is, do you want to wait that long? The other, the other options are, you know, go to Springtown Meeting, ask for a sum of money. Third option is cobble together available local funding sources. That may not equal $80,000 to $100,000. And a fourth option is to attempt to work directly with NIMCOG. The benefit of working with NIMCOG is their rates are lower than private consultants. But, but the, one of the cons is that they don't have the breadth of technical expertise that private consultants have.
What would we be cobbling together?
Available local funds.
Like, what does that mean?
So, for example, if you look at it as a housing component, you could go to CPC and get $10,000. There is an infrastructure component. You could go to DPW and through the sewer enterprise, you could maybe get a sum of money. There's a Conservation Commission environmental component, so you could go to the commission or CPC and cobble together some open space funds. So using a variety of departments, you could likely cobble together a sum of money. It's certainly unlikely to approach $80,000. But, you know, if we review, revisit the scope, maybe we pull out the, the real estate market component of that. That component was the only component that required a consultant to do any new data development. All the others were existing plans. So there's a variety of options. As I've indicated, I've proceeded with making contact with NIMCOG to get that conversation going. But at some point, at some point, the board's going to have to make a, want a timeframe decision, and then ultimately whether there's strong opinions about working with NIMCOG or working with a, with a, with a private, you know, kind of consulting firm.
I think to some degree it might make sense to keep moving forward with NIMCOG to do some of the initial work, and then I think maybe the market study could come into play when we're looking at, at how, more of the action items and things like that. So I think where we want to get to might not need the market study. So maybe we work with NIMCOG on a little bit smaller scope and then do the market study with an external firm. That would certainly narrow the scope and cost, and then have us work with NIMCOG again to pull that data in and come up with the action items. So maybe it's really.
I think what might be helpful is actually trying to develop a scope.
Yep.
And, you know, what I initially envisioned is likely different than what is actually needed in here and now. Maybe getting the, the committee together to try to have a brainstorming session as to what, what really is needed and what is, what is wanted, what product or deliver is going to serve the, serve the community the best.
Yeah. So maybe we keep the, the group, the task force going, have that discussion about potential scopes and how do we want to handle this, and then have the task force present that to the board.
As I say, Mike and I met over the long weekend, and we initially were going to try to get in touch with the committee, but this has been a very tough week for all of us, especially the people on the planning board. So, and town meeting, two sessions. So what we're, what we envisioned, just we talked most recently, is looking at targeting November 4th. So we'd have to reach out to the group of people, see if that works for everyone with the kickoff meeting.
And we've also chatted a little bit about what models we might apply to defining what the problem is, was I think the first part of a meeting of this group is, all right, let's pin the problem down.
Yep.
Into definable, well, you're in high tech, you know all this.
Yeah.
You know how this works.
Yeah, so let's keep that going.
Yeah.
And then see if the group can come up with some recommendations on next steps.
We'll get that.
Okay. Anything else, Evan?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any liaison reports?
Nothing here.
I missed housing advisory, so maybe if you could.
I wasn't there as well. I'm not sure they had a call.
Evan, do you know when the Chelmsford Street survey closes?
The end of October.
That's what I thought. So the only thing, we didn't meet at Center Village because we had the meeting with NIMCOG at the library prior to the last meeting, but just sort of getting people to fill out that survey on ideas and their thoughts on the Chelmsford Street and.
Where do we find that link?
It's been on the town, it's been on Facebook. Is it on the town's website?
It's on the town's website.
It's on the town's website, the site thoughts, so that's, that's where I saw it.
Is it like, what, what should we do about Chelmsford Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have to say that map is very difficult to maneuver.
Yeah, it is a little.
I didn't design it, sorry.
Not easy at all to deal with.
I didn't worry the whole thing, just like the Big Dig.
I didn't design it, I'm sorry.
I know.
But, yeah, they just say want to get public input on it so that they can, we can really start working on that idea.
Who's they, the Department of Transportation?
NIMCOG.
Oh.
This is a, this is a town-initiated project.
I know, but I'm, I get mixed up between the relief roundabouts.
That's Mastodot. Chelmsford Street itself is NIMCOG.
The segment is from the center to Alpine Lane.
Okay.
Is what, is what is being focused on.
Alpine Lane is where the hotel is?
Where the hotel is, yeah. Looking at potential sidewalks, bike lanes, sort of making it parking, making it more of a village-type feel. So they're just looking for a public input at this moment.
The Conservation Commission met last week. They approved 242 Billerica Road, so that's finally done. I think Board of Health was still working on testing. Chelmsford Mall was continued to November 25th, so I'm curious as to whether or not they're coming.
25th?
Good point.
Back to us.
I'm not sure we'd want to see them before CONCOM.
Because CONCOM is not meeting on the 11th because it's a holiday, so their next meeting is the 25th. So Evan, could you reach out to them and find out if they're
Yep.
Going to CONCOM first before us, or if they're?
I don't think they're going to, just based upon what's transpired. They're, they're permitting what the CONCOM is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
It's nothing really to do with the pad sites. It's kind of the, the existing site alterations.
Okay. So there's no reason for them to go to CONCOM first and delay for us?
Unlikely, right.
Okay. I was wishful thinking. We might be able to move one of them out, but, oh, well. All right. Meeting minutes. Has everyone reviewed the meeting minutes? Joel, you were absent for that meeting, so you cannot vote. Any corrections or issues with them? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from?
August 13th.
When is it?
August 13th.
Motion from Deardre, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and Joel abstained?
Yeah, can we add to our new business, old business, I don't know what, discussion about the, now that we've had Princeton Street? No, is it Princeton Street? Whatever the, you know, the thing that we had people before us, which one was it?
Princeton Street.
Yeah, the liquor store, yeah. To discuss then, like, are there things that we want to do that would promote people being aware that they can't just go be making changes?
I'll add it to my list. I've got a big list of things that we need to tackle.
Circle back around to?
We just need a stockade in the center of town, and we put them in the center with a well supply of the rotten tomato.
I do have a list. I've been waiting till after town meeting and after some of these bigger projects get off our radar.
I just thought it'd be good to circle back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We probably won't do more of that type of work until probably January because, as I mentioned, we've got one meeting in November.
One in December.
One in December, and then we've got January.
A bunch of things, a bunch of stuff we need to clear out.
Yeah. So, so we'll probably start tackling more of that stuff, and then depending on the outcome of town meeting, start tackling applying CBLT to other zones at the beginning of the year.
Good luck. One thing.
Yeah.
I'd like to, because you brought up town meeting, if tomorrow you could start your presentation of the reason why we're doing?
Wait, what?
The CBLT, because of all the issues of neighborhoods and that abut IA.
You've got a busy data department.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just kind of reemphasize the whole reason why we're doing CBLT is for all these.
Trying to get some of these IAs out of the middle of residential areas.
At least the, like, the uses that are going in IA.
Yes. There is a handout, public service announcement. There is a handout that I developed as part of the feedback from the pre-town meeting. I believe that there are still a ton left, so I'm going to encourage people to take those because it does highlight some of the differences in uses.
Are they on the table?
Yeah.
And great job with that, by the way, and they were, they are printed in color.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
I don't, I didn't see any.
Yeah. It's, it's got the zoning abbreviation definitions on the first page, so it's not as.
How many pages is it?
Six, I think, because it's got the tables blown up. All right, so the next meeting will start at 6:30. I'm going to actually suggest that we continue starting at 6:30 until we clear out our agenda a little bit more, so that'll continue. All right, I will take a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Deardre, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.